With a mission to deliver fiscally responsible, highly dependable services to the citizens of our community and the region. With integrity and professionalism, this is the City of Albany Commission Meeting with Mayor Bo Duro, John Howard, Ward One, Mayor Pro Tem Matt Fuller, Ward Two, B.J. Fletcher, Ward Three, Chad Warburton, Ward Four, Bob Langstaff, Ward Five, Demetrius Young, Ward Six, with interim City Manager Stephen Carter, City Clerk Sonia Tolbert, and City Attorney Nathan Davis. This is the City of Albany Commission Meeting.
Good morning. We'll call this Tuesday, September 21st, 2021 work session to order. Ms. Tolbert, would you call the roll, please?
Ward One?
Here.
Ward Two?
Here.
Ward Three?
Here.
Ward Four?
Ward Four's here.
Ward Five? Ward Five?
Ward Five is not gonna be here today.
Ward Six?
Here.
Mayor.
Mayor is here. The first three items are zoning cases and Mr. Forghey will be presenting the information. The public, of course, has a right to sign up and express their opinions. Do we have a sign up sheet? Okay, could somebody get me those mistakes? Could I get the sign up sheet so we know who's gonna, who wishes to speak? And anyone, excuse me, anyone who has not signed up, that's the way you're gonna, having a chance to address the commission to sign up. You'll be allowed three minutes. Okay, Mr. Forghey, tell us about this. This is, looks like Ms. Nichols is doing Meme Nine Properties LLC wants to rezone about a quarter of an acre of property located at 1104 North Slappy Boulevard from C1 to CR. Planning Commission approves six to one. It appears that the intent is to have a personal care home on this property. Is that accurate, Mr. Forghey?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you tell us about this?
Yes, good morning, Commission. This application is located at 1104 North Slappy Boulevard and the applicant is requesting to amend the zoning map to rezone .253 acres of a larger .44 acre parcel from C1, which is a neighborhood mixed use business district, to CR, which is a community residential multiple dwelling district. The property is located 1104 North Slappy. The property owner is Meme Nine Properties LLC. The applicant is Levon Nichols. Here you can see the property outlined in blue and notice that this is a portion of this larger parcel. So we're talking about rezoning part of a parcel which will then be subdivided. Here is the subject property or the part that is gonna be rezoned. It's a residential structure on a larger lot with a commercial structure or a couple of commercial structures. Records show that the property has retained its original C1 district designation since the city adopted zoning in 1970. The adjacent properties to the east are zone CR. Properties to the south and west have rezonings from C1 to C2, which is a general mixed use business district. Here you can see the zoning. The red and pink stripe that goes from south to north is along Slappy and on the sides there is a more residential character. This location is a .253 acre portion of a larger parcel with a residential structure and is served by public water and sanitary sewer. The proposed use should be suitable with the adjacent land use and the applicant is proposing to use this as a personal care home. It should not adversely affect the surrounding properties. Developed parcels to the north are zone C2 with uses described as retail. Parcels to the east and northeast are zone CR with uses such as single family, multi- and multifamily dwellings. Here you can see the surrounding land use, again solidly commercial along Slappy, more residential once you get a parcel or two away from Slappy. Access will be from Fourth Avenue, which is considered a minor street and Slappy is an urban principal arterial. Based on information from the trip generation manual, a care facility could generate two trips per patient per weekday. The proposal should have no additional impact on utilities or schools. The impact of the, on the existing streets and transportation facilities will be minimal and staff did not identify any adverse traffic concerns related to the proposed use. North Slappy has an average daily trip count of 22,000 in 2020. The information is, information is not available for the trip capacity. Albany Transit serves the area. According to the DARTS plan, there are no state or federally funded projects proposed for the area. The future land use map shows that this proposal conforms with the future land use map, which recommends high density residential for the areas between Fourth and Fifth along Slappy. Subject property lies within this area and the proposed rezoning is consistent. Staff did not identify any existing or changing conditions that support approval or disapproval of the rezoning application. The planning commission recommended approval to rezone .253 acres from C1 to CR. If you have any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Forghey. Any questions, Ms. Howard?
No question.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Forghey, I apologize. You're, I can only hear bits and pieces with the audio. But you were referring to the parcel. We're rezoning just one, one part of the property because I guess that, that residential structure actually sits on the same parcel. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. There are a couple structures. I think there are two commercial structures and the residential structure on the single parcel and the applicant wants to subdivide, rezone and subdivide off the residential structure.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Ms. Warburton?
Yeah, Mr. Forghey, just for, I guess, my edification. On the zoning table, you have family care home, group care home, congregate care home. What is the definition of a family care home versus those other two? Is it just by the number of residents?
It's a generic term. It would all fall under the state's jurisdiction for a personal care home, which is also kind of a generic term. The state would regulate how many, how many clients they could have based on the size. I mean, of course, the city sets a cap based on the zoning, but then the state can regulate further based on the size of the structure. But it, this rezoning would allow for the applicant to use it for a personal care home, for any, any type of client, for disabled, for physically or mentally disabled folks.
Excuse me, Commissioner Warburg. What were the three classifications?
Well, so on the zoning table, you got family care home, you got group care home and congregate care home. The latter two, group and congregate, would be allowed under C1. I just didn't know what, what use would make it a family care home that's requiring the zoning that if it were determined a group or congregate. Looks like that would be allowable?
I'm trying to pull up the table as we speak.
It's got CC, which is County Commission, but I don't know CD-wide.
Well, then, CR allows for additional residents. So CR allows for seventeen, seven to fifteen residents as a group care home, under personal care home?
Right.
Right, so if, I believe the applicant wants to have more than five or six. Five or six are allowed in C1, but more than that is not. So this change would allow for more clients.
Okay, well, so the applicant owns the, like Commissioner Fullow was asking, the applicant owns the entire parcel to Slappy?
That's correct.
They're just wanting to zone the?
That's correct, so they can conduct a, a business out of this being a personal care home.
Okay. All right, that's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Ms. Young?
No questions.
Okay, no one has signed up on this case. Does anybody wish to speak on zoning case 21039? Request a rezone at 1104 North Slappy Boulevard from C1 to CR. With that, we'll move to the next matter. Zoning case 21 hyphen O41 Colonial Town Center seeks special approval to construct a car wash at 2828 Nottingham Way. Planning Commission approved this application and I assume, Mr. Forghey, that special approval is required for a business like a car wash?
That is correct.
Okay, tell us about this, please, sir.
Yes, in this particular zone, a special approval is required. The property is located at the southeast corner of Nottingham and Lido Road. The applicant requests special approval to construct a new car wash in the C7 zone, which is a mixed use planned development district. The property is approximately 1.3, 1.36 acres and the address is 2828 Nottingham Way. Property owner is Colonial Town Center LLC. The applicant is David White. Here you can see the, the subject property zoning and surrounding zoning. The Albany-Dorty zoning ordinance recommends consideration of the following factors for special approval requests, considering the transportation network. The trip generation manual shows that traffic, current traffic volumes on Lido and Nottingham Way are as follows. Nottingham Way has an average daily trip traffic count of 14,900. Lido Road has an average daily traffic count of 10,200. According to the trip generator, a car wash detail facility would increase daily traffic counts by approximately 156 daily trips. The road classifications, Nottingham Way is an urban minor collector street. Lido is considered an urban minor arterial street. The analysis is that no adverse impact to the surrounding transportation network should result from the proposed use. The applicant is providing parking onsite for both employees and customers. Adequate parking is provided by the waiting spaces leading to the car wash stall. There appears to be minimal impact on the surrounding sites and no concern for spillover of waiting vehicles onto adjacent streets or parcels is anticipated. There are approximately .55 acres or 24,000 square feet of open space, including a 5,800 square foot detention area. Signs must comply with the Albany sign ordinance. The applicant proposes one freestanding, freestanding sign to be displayed on Nottingham Way. That sign will be 13 feet by seven feet and will be placed on a pole 30 feet above the surface. The ordinance only allows for the, for signs to be 25 feet high, so this will require application and approval by administrative variance. Three additional signs will be placed on the building as well. The applicant does not propose any fence surrounding the site. Fencing is required for a car wash facility, but a variance request was submitted and approved by the planning commission, requesting a waiver of the fence requirement with a substitution of landscaping to serve the same purpose. According to the applicant, there will be outdoor lighting positioned so that the surrounding uses and roadways are minimally impacted. Here you can see a photograph of the site. This is looking on, on Nottingham, looking to the southeast. It's currently a vacant lot. Here's the surrounding land use. To the north is Lee County across Lido. East and west is commercial and then further to the east, you can see it's subdivided and it used, it's used as a residential area. An aerial view of the site. And this, this is the future land use map showing that the area is expected to be commercial. The proposed use is suitable with the adjacent land uses as well as the subject site itself. The adjacent land uses include commercial, eating establishments, offices, et cetera. Future, future land use map recommends commercial uses on the site. The proposed use would not conflict with that recommendation. The planning commission recommended approval. Now, they wanted me to explain this. They did not condition this approval, but the discussion came up after the fact about potential noise issues with the car wash and they wanted me to pass that on to the city commission. In the past, with other, with other commercial uses that have the potential to generate noise, the approval has been conditioned on a sound study being done to prove that it will not impact the surrounding neighborhood and if there is a potential impact, that a solution can be devised before that impact is built. So they wanted me to pass that on, but it was not recommended to you with a condition. If you have any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Ms. Howard?
No question to Paul.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yes, Mr. Forghey, I apologize again. The audio that I was hearing from you, I was only getting bits and pieces. So if I ask something, you've already answered. I apologize. But the C, the current C7 zoning, what, what does that allow? Like what type of business could go with the current zoning?
C7 is a, is kind of a difficult zone because it used to be C4, which is a commercial zone and when probably 15 years ago, the city changed the definition of C4 to C7. C7 requires that a use has some commercial and some residential. However, it's also a planned development zoning and this, this entire corner was developed as a planned development. So when, when the zoning for this corner was approved, each of the parcels was indicated to be some type of commercial use. So the, the commission approved the entire development as commercial without a residential component, which was allowed at the time. So this is a little bit outside the ordinary. A C7 zone in general requires some residential and some commercial. But in this case, because it was approved some time ago as an overall development, commercial can take place on this, but a car wash requires special approval in any zone. So it was brought to you all, even though C7 is not necessarily, a new C7 would not allow a car wash by itself, but this existing C7 does because it was part of an overall plan. Hopefully that wasn't too confusing.
Okay, I think, I think I'm following you. So if a, I'd say that a proposed restaurant was, was going here, would that, would that require special approval or that would only be for the car wash?
I, I believe a restaurant would be allowed by right. Car washes are exceptions to that.
Hey, and I'm, I'm sorry, I, the audio cut out again. But I guess, you know, there've been, I've gotten lots of calls and lots of emails and, and letters about the concerns about mostly the noise. And I think a lot of it has stemmed from the car wash on Slappy where we had issues with the noise, you know, from the neighborhood behind. If, and I know, I think I actually spoke with Mr. Dent, who is, who is working with the applicant and he was telling me about some of the efforts to, to curb the noise and I don't know if you want to speak to that or wait on Mr. Dent to speak to that?
Well, just to reiterate, the planning commission did not pass this on with a condition, but wanted me to mention this to the commission that in the past, we have considered requiring a sound study to demonstrate that the sound generated by a use, to demonstrate the impact that a sound, the sound generated by a use would or would not impact the surrounding residential area and if there is gonna be a negative impact, that it, a solution be brought up during construction rather than have to deal with it after the fact. So the city commission, if it chooses, could condition approval on this to include a sound study.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Fletcher?
Well, I do have some comments, but I think I'm gonna wait till Mr. Dent gets up here. I know he's here to talk and my comments will really probably be more questions for him. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Ms. Warburton?
Yeah, Mr. Forghey, you kind of touched on this, but again, looking at the zoning table here, car wash is allowable in a C2, C3. So why didn't the applicant apply to change zoning to C2, C3 instead of do a special approval?
Well, it's six of one, half dozen of the other. Each one requires this entire process. Special approval versus zoning, they're roughly the same. And because this corner was developed under a, a general development plan, as, as C7 allows, it was felt best just to keep it C7 like the remaining parcels were because we have a restaurant and a bank, I believe, on those C7 parcels as well. So to keep that general development plan intact, but they could have gone that route. It would have resulted in the same thing or potentially.
Yeah, and I would disagree with that statement. I think a C2, C3 would be harder to justify because again, you mentioned a planned development. This whole parcel was a planned development, so to break off a corner and go C2, C3, you, you're, you're breaking away from the planned development.
Right.
Which indicates to me that a car wash may be borderline unsuitable for what was originally planned and developed for that corner and that's, that's the concern I have is that you're kind of putting a square peg in a round hole for this corner possibly. And at the utmost caution needs to be thought about and talked about before we allow this. Couple of concerns I have is you mentioned the noise. So some of these other car washes we have in town, have we done anything for their noise concerns? Have you gotten complaints? Like I guess if I think of the one on Slappy there, is it Oasis? It has residents as closer, closer than this location. Have we had noise issues there on Slappy?
Yes, that, that one, that one has had noise issues, but that's the only one that I am aware of that has had noise issues. But the houses, as you say, are considerably closer. They're right behind it.
What have we done to mitigate that noise?
A, a wall was built behind the, well, a couple of things. Initially, the owners put in new blowers that are more recent technology that are quieter than the ones it was built with, but that did not significantly mitigate the sound. So a wall was built between the, or in the alley, I believe, behind the car wash, in between the car wash and the residences to help mitigate the sound. But in addition, before all that, a sound study was conducted. But this was after the, after the car wash was built, the sound study determined that yes, it does make a lot of noise. So if a sound study were conducted beforehand, it could be scientifically proven through the sound study that there is gonna be a negative impact or not. And if there is, this is how it can be mitigated and we can require that it be constructed that way to mitigate the sound from the very beginning.
Right, and that's where I was gonna go with this, is that I assume that this car wash is gonna have the same technology or same blowers. You know, we've got enough in town that you could go to these different sites and we actually have a sound ordinance that has a certain decibel of sound that of, you know, so scientifically you could say, you know, 200 feet from this location, the sound, you know, with 99% certainty, we know what the sound level is gonna be. Now, whose responsibility, is it the applicant to go to bring that information to us or is it the city's? Whose responsibility is it to provide the scientific noise data?
If it's before the, before it's built, it can be conditioned that it's the applicant's responsibility. But in the case of the, the car wash on Slappy, that was after the fact and the city did that. So that was after it was approved and we allowed it to be built.
Okay, so that, that would definitely be one of my concerns is the noise and needing that upfront. The, the other thing is just coming with an application with, I guess they're asking for two variances. One is the fence variance and the other one is the sign variance.
They have not applied for the sign variance, but I believe they're aware of that fact. So they, they could easily back off of it for five feet and they wouldn't need a variance. But yes, otherwise they will need a variance for that and they did ask for a variance. The sign variance is administrative, so that will just come to me. The other variance was through the planning commission, which was granted.
Yeah, so whoever approves, again, we're asking for two variances on top of asking for a special approval, on top of noise concerns, it just, I guess I have some concerns overall with this. So plus the number of complaints or opposition letters that we've received has been pretty significant as well. So that's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Ms. Young?
Yes, what are the operation hours of the proposed store, proposed car wash?
Monday through Saturday from seven to, seven in the morning to eight in the evening. Sunday from eight in the morning to six in the evening.
Okay, so they can start as early as seven in the morning?
That, that's what's stated.
That's it.
Thank you. I also had some questions about the, the two variances. I mean, I, I didn't know, what point in time did a request for? I mean, I didn't know, at what point in time did a request for variance, was that delegated to the director of planning?
At your last meeting, when you all approved the sign ordinance. That's when it was delegated to me.
Okay, when we went through all that?
Well, and that's just for the sign ordinance issues. The other issue goes to the planning commission.
Okay.
So that, it's always been that way. Variance is going to the planning commission. But the sign ordinance was just approved at the last meeting.
Okay. Well, I remember, Mr. Forky, one time we were revising the signed ordinance and the whole issue about having the maximum height. The next business wants to be five feet higher, and the next business, you know, just, and that's the problem there with granting a variance. We start giving everybody, the next bill. Obviously, my concern is the noise. I had a friend who lived on Acker, probably six houses down from the car wash on Slappy. And I went over there one day, it sounded like being on a tarmac. I mean, it was, it was bad. And that might have been before the blowers were changed out. But the dilemma they had is, their opportunity to come up and voice concern was at a public hearing before they had any idea of the actual noise that would be created by the car wash. And so this thing about a study, I mean, I certainly think if we are going to grant this application, we need to know what type of blowers, and what amount of noise, and how disruptive it might be to the whole, because clearly, you've got restaurants right over there, that next shopping center adjacent to it, Mella Mushroom's across the street. I mean, it could be disruptive if it's the same noise level as what was previously at the car wash on Slappy. But in the end, I just, you know, on the other hand, somebody owns that property, and they got a right to the best and highest use of it. But I would, like I say, I would have thought more businesses in immediate proximity, not, I see some folks across the street have expressed concern, but...
Mayor?
Yes?
May I ask Mr. Forky one more question?
Sure.
But, Mr. Forky, the other issue I see on Slappy a lot, and I forgot to ask this during my time, is they routinely have cars that are out into Slappy.
Right.
So when you take the arm, I guess it lets you in the car wash, and you back up to Slappy, have you seen a layout that they propose here? And will the entrance be off Lido or be off Nottingham? And do we have that same risk of cars, you know, on a Saturday or Sunday when everybody's washing their cars? Is there a potential of cars being backed into Lido or Nottingham, based on a site plan? I don't know if you've seen a site plan.
I have seen a site plan, and the entrance would not be directly off of Nottingham. You would have to enter on a access road to get into the entrance. And it is designed to have what we consider suitable stacking. So there are, I don't know how many spaces, but there are a number of spaces before you get to the car wash facility to allow for that, to ideally prevent any cars from clogging up the public right of way.
Okay. So your calculation would be using that access road for the stacking? Or would the stacking be only on the property?
No, it is stacking on their property. But it does, you don't enter directly into the car wash off of Nottingham. You turn on a entry road, and then you turn into the car wash. And within there, there's sufficient room for stacking.
Okay. I guess we just coined a new phrase, stacking.
Right.
Car wash. That's it, Mayor.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Forky.
You're welcome.
We have two individuals signed up, but I notice on the, notice it has this hearing for 10 o'clock AM. So I guess if somebody comes in later on and wants to speak, you see that, Ms. Talbert? On page 18?
I do see it, Mayor, and that information was provided by the planning department.
Okay. I guess we should have caught that, but in the unlikely event somebody comes in at 10 o'clock, I'll go ahead and say we'll let them speak. The two people who've signed up are Mr. Joseph Dent and Ms. Lisa Edwards. Is Ms. Edwards with us? Okay. Is there anyone else at this time that wants to sign, I mean, that wants to speak on zoning case 21041? If not, Ms. Dent, could we ask you to limit your comments to three minutes?
All right. Thank you. First of all, Commissioner Warbington, if you will, there is a site plan in the application. And if you look at that, yes, there is an entrance from Nottingham Way, but then the entrance into the car wash itself pretty much wraps around the entire property, so that there should be ample space, unlike the car wash on Slappy, where it is directly off of Slappy into the car wash itself. So there's not a lot of room for multiple cars. I also have a, which I'd like to get this in the record, Ms. Talbert, as well as hand out to the commissioners. If you would keep one, Ms. Talbert, and put one in the record, and then hand the rest to the commissioners. It is an informational sheet on caliber car wash. It has some photographs of the car wash, which is a state-of-the-art. It's newer than the one on Oasis. And I won't go over the application, because that meets all the requirements, as Mr. Forky has pointed out. The noise concerns, as I understand it, there are basically three concerns: the vacuums, the blowers, and then loud music. And the applicant is, has, is addressing all of those. First of all, the vacuums are state-of-the-art. They're made of a heavier alloy, so it prevents the vibrating. The heavier something is, the less noise it makes. They have dampers at all connection points. And according to my client, you can stand next to a vacuum while it's operating and have a conversation, basically at a normal tone of voice. So that's the vacuums that they use on the cars after the car wash. With regard to the blowers, again, those are state-of-the-art. I understand that the ones at Oasis reduced the noise when they upgraded them, so these are even newer. The difference, too, from Oasis is that this car wash is several hundred, 500 or more feet from the residences behind Buffalo Wild Wings.
30 seconds.
And you've got the building that, the car wash is a buffer, as well as Buffalo Wild Wings as a buffer. The blowers are on the, the car wash points back into the property, so again, that's a buffer. And the houses on Lido are over 500 feet, and you just have traffic noise as a buffer. And then from the music standpoint, the applicant is going to post signs and enforce that there's no, no loud music allowed, I mean, no loud music allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Dent. Any questions for Mr. Dent and Mr. Howard?
Mr. Dent?
Yes, sir.
In your presentation, you did elude that the houses that was in concern was behind Buffalo Wild Wings, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did a hotel across the street, do you think that would be a problem?
From my understanding, I do not. I believe that, again, the blowers are state-of-the-art, and the vacuums, they don't, they don't make that much noise. Again, that's probably 500 feet or better, and you've got normal traffic noise as well that would be in between the two.
Okay. Now, the ingress, I mean, the egress and the ingress is coming off Lido Road or Nottingham? Which one?
There's, it will be coming off, the proposal is for Nottingham, as subject to traffic engineering and DOT approval, as well as you can enter it from the shopping center parking lot as well.
Okay. Now, there's a empty building there, would that building remain, or it'll just be demolished?
I think the lot itself is vacant.
I mean, it's a building somewhere up there in front of Buffalo Wild Wing?
Yes, that's not part of this lot.
Okay, so it's down further on the corner?
Excuse me?
It's down on the corner of Nottingham and...
I think it's more towards the south. The corner lot is completely vacant.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
No questions for Mr. Dent. I just wanted to make sure, Ms. Talbert, that we have the nine letters that were received in opposition. Just wanted to make sure we had those for the record. Thank you.
Yeah, that was the information that was distributed earlier.
Okay. Did Mr. Dent see that?
I have not seen those.
Okay. Can we, do we have a copy we can provide, Mr. Dent?
Yes.
That's good. Okay. Ms. Fletcher?
Well, yes, sir, I do have something to say. The car wash that y'all are talking about on Slappy has probably been a nightmare for me for two years. What happened was, the car wash was approved, and TAF sits right behind that. And sincerely, two years ago, when the families called me over, you could sit on their back porch, and when everything was going full force, you literally saw the glass shake on their balcony. So I got ahold of the owners of the car wash, and they did everything that you could ask of them. They upgraded their blowers, which was, if I'm not mistaken, $33,000 for each blower. The city stepped in, and said this has been going on for two years, and the completion of the wall was probably three months ago. And, you know, the blowers, it did make a slight difference, because it started with Robert Carter, and now Mr. Norman has been on it, if I'm not mistaken. And we were doing study after study after study of sound. And you talked a little bit about it, Mr. Dent. The biggest problem that we faced, and we are still facing, and it seems that nothing is being done about it, and a lot of it is just, just maybe the people that are working really don't know how to handle, it's a touchy subject, the music. The officers, Chief personally could probably pull up how many times, his officers are being called to that location. And quite honestly, by the time they get over there, the people have left, the music would be, I mean, this is torn, because we want to be business-friendly, then we want to respect the people that's around there. And, you know, I could, I could, it's tough. It's going to be a tough decision on my part because of those two reasons. But the music would have to go. I mean, it wouldn't, it couldn't even be, well, we're going to turn it down, because what one sees is turning down, the other, I mean, clearly, the music, and then the music that so many people are listening to today, you know, that's a little rough on your ears sometimes, you know. But that is, Mr. Dent, I do see everything that they're doing, you know, and congestion, I won't even, anything's going to create congestion. You could put a tomato stand out, and anything's going to create congestion on that corner. It's just a tight corner. But, and I've talked with a realtor, I've talked with Mr. Dent, I do know that this is Commissioner Fuller's area. I've talked with them on it, but it's going to be, the music, I mean, there's just no way of doing a study, a sound study, till it's put together. But if we could literally go out there and hear the blowers and hear the music at the sound at the same time, and stand in that neighborhood and see what they're listening to. Mella Mushroom, she has music. So that's going to be okay. I could go on and on with that. But it's the residents, and even though Buffalo Wild Wings and that plaza will act as a buffer, it's going to do the same thing that that wall did for us behind TAF, Hoover, and all of that area. That's exactly what, they're going to take the brunt of that music. But that's, it's just, Mr. Dent, it's just tough to know what these people are going to live like. So, you know, I thank you, I do know that you've taken this, and you've really studied, you probably know more about car washes now than you choose to know. So thank you for your time.
And as I said in my presentation, Commissioner Fletcher, the operator, owner-operator has agreed to post signs prohibiting loud music, and so, and that will be enforced. Let me add real quickly that with regard to the variance on the fencing, they have already submitted a landscaping plan, which is required, and they will, they staff their locations well. And as it was said to me on the phone, if there's any trash on the ground, somebody's going to get fired. So the owner is very serious about having a clean and a friendly business as a car wash. And the difference with Slappy is, the cars are exiting, from the blowers are exiting basically into the neighborhood as it points, and it is, you know...
Oh, it's a nightmare.
And so we do have a considerable amount of distance here, and the blowers are facing, essentially away from the neighborhood.
Will the wall be in between the plaza? I mean, the wall, the landscaping that they're building, are they building a fence or a wall?
It's a landscaping buffer to catch trash, if there is any, but it goes around the backside, I think, is, the proposal is, it goes around the back, what I would call the backside, the side opposite Nottingham, between the car wash, the lot, and Buffalo Wild Wings, and then along the ingress and egress from Buffalo Wild Wings towards Nottingham.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dent.
There any other?
Chris Warbington?
Yeah, Mr. Dent, thank you for coming. So, you know, I certainly respect your comments around new technology, but really, the best method is scientific. So do you have any scientific data? I think the ordinance says 60 decibels is the limit.
I have not been provided any. I will certainly try to get that and get it in the record before you vote next week and let you know. I will discuss with my client, too. I've made notes about the sound study that could be, obviously, I wouldn't, I'm not for that, but that's certainly within your discretion to request that as a condition of approval.
Yeah, well, it's just fitting in with our city ordinance. So city ordinance says in a residential neighborhood, the limit is 60.
Right.
It says commercial is 65. So that would mean, I guess, the outdoor area of Buffalo Wild Wings, and I think Mella Mushroom has an outdoor area, and then you've got the hotel, those would be 65, if I read the ordinance correctly. But, you know, we'd have to have assurance that the outdoor patio areas were 65 or less, and the residences over there off of Sly is a 60. So I don't know if the owner owns one of these in another location, or another city, or...
They own, as you'll see in the, when you look, I know you haven't had a chance, but when you look at the handout, they own several. And so I will try to find out from them and get something to you guys.
Okay. And then, why is it that they don't want to do the fence? Do they think it's...
It's just because of the way it's sitting in there, and in the center of the, I get a better term, center of the shopping center. It's just that a fence is just, I don't, I don't remember exactly what was stated in the variance, because it was, once it was approved, that's by the planning commission. But it was, it was just for aesthetic reasons, I believe, mainly. But it, and, you know, because of where it sits with the, with the shopping center, right there behind it and everything.
Okay. All right. That's it, Mayor.
Chris Young?
Thank you for Mr. Dent. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Mr. Dent, has your client already purchased this property, or they...
I believe this is, this is part of the purchasing process.
Okay. So whether they buy the property is conditional, or whether or not they...
I'm not 100% sure. I hadn't seen the contract, but that is my, I believe that's the part of, an understanding within, with the parties.
The other thing, I'm thinking, if this is a franchise, you know, I know that typically they use the same, Chick-fil-A's going to be almost the same setup wherever you go. And I was thinking that if they know what kind of equipment they're going to put in, then we could have a sound study to know what volume of noise or sound is created using the same equipment. using the same equipment if we went, you know, if we knew what location they were going to sort of duplicate here.
Right.
If the application is granted, that's one way we could find out. That's all I had, thank you, Mr. Dent.
All right, thank you.
Let me ask, Mr. Davis, the letters that have been submitted in opposition, we can get that, Ms. Talbert, from Mr. Dent? Did he get a copy? Okay. Okay, good. The letters obviously can be considered by the commission, correct?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Just like in lieu of these people appearing?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, all right.
Can I ask one more thing, Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dent, and you might not know this, but I would like to know this because we're running across this. Do these owners, once they get them open, do they, do they remain owners or do they sell this business to someone?
As far as I know, they remain owners, as you'll see from the handout, they own several and it is called Caliber Car Washes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And I'll double check that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, sir.
Okay, the only other person we have signed up is Ms. Lisa Edwards. Ms. Edwards, good morning. Just want to confirm, no one else is signed up for zoning case 21-041? Ms. Edwards, if I could ask you to keep your comments to three minutes?
Certainly. I have, I was one that did submit a letter and so, for the sake of time, I won't go over those concerns, but I do have additional concerns that was not stated in the letter. I am opposed to the car wash, for the records, for multiple reasons that have not even been mentioned here today, and that is for the safety and the well-being of the community around there. I think it has not been taken into consideration that we have buses, Lee County and Darty County traveling that roadway up to that light area. We, I have also, in 2016, was involved in an accident right there at that light on Lido Road, a hit and run. One of the problems, being a local resident there, that we already are having issues with traffic being an issue, and I see that they have proposed that it's only going to increase the traffic by about 156 additional cars through there. But that is a proposed number, there's no guarantee. Another concern I have for is the sustainability of the business in that area, period, because when you're in, from the area that I'm at, when you look in each direction within just a few miles is a car wash, you go this way, you've got Tsunami, you go this way, you've got Oasis, you go this way, you've got DJ's, you go this way, you've got Googles. Across the street from this proposed area is also a car wash, that's a hand detailed car wash, that I think would substantially support anybody who wanted car washes in the local area. I am concerned about the noise, I'm concerned about the traffic that goes in, the proposal to, you know, seven o'clock, the traffic that goes into the daycare at that light to the right, you know. There is houses that are directly across, that are closer than the ones that are behind Buffalo Wild Wings. I'm also concerned about the, as it is right now, the interest that they're talking about there at Nottingham, as it is now, if I leave my house down Lido Road, take a left and try to turn into that property, it plainly states that there's no left turns allowed there as of the moment, you know. So what's going to be happening? Are they going to redo, you know, is DOT going to change that out so now we have access to that area because we put a car wash at the border?
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I think this location would better serve with a more viable business. And I think as you look in the areas, they're already businesses struggling and I do not think a car wash would benefit the local community there. I think it's more viable for something else that would increase and be more business and community friendly. And with that said, I will, I'm open to any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Any questions, Commissioner Howard?
Good morning, Ms. Edwards, how you do?
Good morning.
Did you say you live within the vicinity of Lido and Nottingham?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you did say that in the past you did have a car accident there, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's it, thank you.
Mayor Protem, questions?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
You live behind Buffalo Wild Wings?
I don't live directly behind Buffalo Wild Wings, I live on the Lee County side, just a little further down.
Okay, and I know that, she's a friend of mine, so I know that Lisa Lewis that owns Mellow Mushroom, some of the houses lined up with that daycare, they've actually lodged complaints at night because of the music. And I was wondering, do you hear that down to where you're at? You know, the home's sort of right behind?
We can, where we're located at, and I would estimate we're like maybe three blocks down. So the residential area that they keep allude to from behind Buffalo Wild Wings, I'm like a half a block from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And there, if something goes down on at that intersection, it can be car accidents, you know, because of sirens and all that, you will hear that down at my residence.
Okay. And you're saying, I mean, I didn't realize this, I know coming, coming your way, you can take a left at the light, you know, right there by the car lot?
Right, at the corner, Nottingham.
But you're saying you can't take a left, remember where the donut shop was at, or into the plaza, that it says no left there?
Exactly.
Wow, I didn't, I didn't realize that, okay, thank you.
Yes, and I know this because I've missed my turn before and I've had to go all the way down, turn around to comply to the law that's in effect as of the moment, had to go down and turn around and then come back into that area.
I didn't realize that, thank you, thank you for coming.
Ms. Warburton?
Thank you for coming to speak, I have to vouch for what you're saying, I go to that intersection a lot and that is a tough intersection, coming from the movies in Mellow Mushroom and also coming out of that shopping center. You have left and rights and if there's, you can't turn left, definitely there's, there's some congestion that this would exacerbate even the problem that we currently have. So, thank you for coming to share with us today.
Ms. Young?
Thank you for your question. No questions, thank you.
Ms. Edwards, did you say you submitted a letter?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay, do we, do we have some other letters besides what was handed out?
I haven't received any other letters. Who did you submit it to?
It was through, I think, email. I have a copy of it on my phone if I need to resubmit it.
I mean, I just don't see it in this list of letters, so.
I think it's the one Matt Fuller sent us. He sent us a list of letters.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Ms. Edwards, have a good day.
Thank you.
Okay, and again, if anybody comes, unlikely if anybody comes at 10 o'clock, we'll let them speak. Mr. Forghey, the next item is applicants Jacindris Harris and Lakeisha Harris, want to seek special approval to operate a daycare at 2510 Hilltop Road. Planning Commission approved, and I believe this is on the premises of the Southern Methodist Church, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
This is a request for special approval located at 2510 Hilltop Drive. The applicant requests special approval to operate a childcare facility to serve up to 18 clients. The parcel is owned R1, which allows for childcare, or child daycare to serve six or fewer clients. The property is approximately 2.58 acres and the address is 2510 Hilltop Drive. Here you can see the subject property outlined in blue and the surrounding area, mostly residential, some mixed uses there. The Albany Doherty zoning ordinance recommends consideration of the following factors for special approval requests. The impact on the transportation network. Hilltop Road is, has an average daily traffic count of 7,730. The proposed use is expected to generate an increase of approximately 48 trips per day. Information from the Traffic Engineering Division indicates that the property is not near a high accident location. The street that provides access to the property is classified as a local road. The analysis concludes that there's no adverse impact to the surrounding transportation network. According to the applicant, there is parking provided within the church parking lot, which is adequate for a child daycare facility. Parking for the daycare facility is not expected to interfere with church parking. There are approximately 1.38 acres of open space and the applicant proposes to fence a 25 by 25 area for recreation. The applicant will install a four-foot chain link fence as required by Georgia's Bright From the Start program. Signs must comply with the City of Albany sign ordinance. The applicant proposes a monument sign to identify the facility. The proposal is for a sign to be four by four, this is larger than allowed in an R1 and will require a variance through the sign ordinance that you all passed last month. The applicant states that there will be a fenced area for the children to play, there's a vegetative buffer made of trees and hedges between the parcel to the west, which is WALB, and to the north, which is an apartment complex. According to the applicant, there will be outdoor lighting provided by the existing light poles within the parking lot. The facility will operate Monday through Saturday from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. Hours of operation are not expected to interfere with the church hours of operation. The proposed use is not in conflict with the future land use map, which recommends institutional public uses for this area. Here you can see the church and the surrounding land uses, apartments to the north, WALB headquarters to the east, and single family to the south and west. An aerial view of that? The proposed use is suitable with adjacent land uses, the area is predominantly single family and multifamily residential. Property of the north is an apartment complex, WALB TV station headquarters is located on the adjacent property to the west. The project should not be a negative impact to the adjacent and surrounding properties. Here you can see the future land use map, the current parcel is designated for public institutional uses in the future, surrounded by residential mostly. And the Planning Commission recommended approval for this proposal. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Forghey. Any questions, Commissioner Howard?
No questions to Mr. Forghey.
Mayor Protem?
How long has it been since it was operated as a church?
I do not know, I apologize.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No questions.
Ms. Warburton?
No questions.
Ms. Young?
No questions.
So this property is no longer operated as a church, Mr. Forghey?
That was my understanding, but I'm really not sure. I can find out for you and let you all know.
Well, I see that, is it Ms. Peaks? The applicant is on the line to ask any questions?
Ms. Harris was intending to be, but had a death in the family, I'm not sure if she managed to get online or not.
Okay. Ms. Harris, or Ms. Peaks, or Ms. Martin, anybody on the line? Okay. Just if, I see that it's the property that used, or is, or used to be Southern Methodist Church, but then the owners are Mr. and Ms. Harris, so that would indicate that maybe the church is closed, but I guess we can find that out. Mr. Forghey?
Yes.
Let the commission know?
We'll let you know today.
Okay. No one has signed up, does anyone wish to speak on this item? Case number 2144.
Mayor, if I can, I was just looking at the tax record, looks like the owner purchased this property in February from the church. So First Methodist is not the owner as of February 2021.
Okay.
The individual owner purchased it, purchased it from the church.
All right, so.
In February of this year.
Clearly, wouldn't be any?
So whether or not they still meet on Sundays, I don't know, but the church is not the owner of the property anymore.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Forghey.
You're welcome.
With that, the public hearing will be closed. The next item on the agenda is notifying the commission of upcoming appointments. There's one vacancy on the Downtown Development Authority, we have two applicants, Dr. Tripp Morgan and Evelyn Ross. Ms. Talbert, will make that appointment next Tuesday?
Yes, Mayor, and also, Mr. Dawson said he'd like to make a remark about the mics, if you don't mind.
If you have a speaker room this morning, point the microphone down to where it's at your mouth, make sure you speak up louder, the microphone's sensitive this morning, and you do have a remote conditioner and people on the zooming, and the only way they can pick you up coming out of this room is through that sound system, so make sure you speak up.
Did everybody hear Mr. Dawson? Okay, good. And then?
I could not hear Mr. Dawson, I'm sorry.
Well, he just said, he just said, "Speak up." And also, there are three appointments to the Land Bank. Patrick Bush, who is currently serving, wishes to be reappointed. Albert Etheridge seeks appointment. And so there will be one other appointment to fill an unexpired term, is that correct?
It is, Mayor, and we do have a person that is going through the process now and we may have that name for you, I'll email it and send his application for consideration at the night meeting as well.
Okay, and then it says staff makes recommendations?
That's the way the bylaws are written, yes. I'll defer to Mr. Forghey if you have any questions on that, though.
Okay, so, Mr. Forghey, you'll get us those recommendations before the meeting next Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
There's a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Are these appointments on just, I guess, the regular schedule or?
Well, we were running a little behind with the appointments, but yes, these are current appointments.
Except there's, Mr. Forghey, if you could just let us know who this is, the unexpired term? If this person moved out of the jurisdiction, no, I mean, just when you get us an email, just moved out of the jurisdiction or said they didn't want to serve anymore or passed away, whatever brought about that vacancy?
Mayor, I can let you know right now that Ms. Sutton and Ms. Cobb both resigned off of the board.
Okay.
Creating two vacancies.
Okay, so we actually have, but Ms. Sutton's term is expired?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why we would appoint someone to place her, okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a request to proceed with petition for eminent domain over the property which is commonly known as Lake Cornelia. Mr. Maples, is Mr. Maples with us?
He's on the phone.
He is, okay. What I thought would be, the best way to approach this was, Mr. Maples, you tell us where this property is, why we need it, what purpose it's going to serve in the stormwater plan, and then Mr. Davis could explain to us the legal procedures that the city would be following and why we need to follow those procedures. Is that okay? With everybody? Okay. Mr. Maples?
Yes, sir, good morning to everyone. So, you know, years ago, this is, this is all part of the Lake Park subdivision area, it was developed back in the 50s. There are two lakes that were created in Lake Park subdivision, one was Lake Loretta, which is on Dawson Road across from Shoreham Apartments, which everybody sees that holds water. The Lake Loretta discharges and goes down a flume, down a ditch, and goes to what's called Lake Cornelia. You know, this was two daughters of Spencer Walden, they were named after that, but most people nowadays refer to Lake Cornelia as the Dry Lake. So it's at the summit, and I think it's Forest Glen or somewhere in that area, is the typical area that it's located in. We had a drainage problem that existed on Metal Arc, near the intersection of Pheasant and Metal Arc, it's been a drainage problem for years. We looked at it and there were issues that were presented with the, what we call the Three Oaks Pond, it's called Three Oaks Pond because in the small pond at that intersection at the southeast corner, there are three oaks. And a lot of people had concerns about digging the pond out and plus there was not really sufficient volume area-wise to handle the drainage that is actually coming to that area. area with the Three Oaks Pond. So to eliminate a storm drainage issue in the area, it was looked to try and find a bigger basin, a bigger pond area that could handle the volume of water that was being discharged. And we looked at the Lake Cornelia area, and we did a drainage analysis, and plans have been developed. They have been completed since 2017. We have been negotiating and working with the Lake Park Recreation Homeowners Association for quite some time. There are many issues which I'll let Mr. Nathan Davis address. So the plan is to, you know, eventually go in and excavate and take out some volume in the Lake Cornelia pond to provide some area and the appropriate capacity for the increased volume of water that we'd be discharging there. And then at some point, we put in a pipe system to pick up the pond, the water at the Three Oaks Pond area and discharge that to the to the Lake Cornelia area. And so it's been presented, I know in several CSO, in storm drainage improvement presentations, it's about a $1.5 million estimated project. And, you know, the whole holdup as to why we have not moved forward is the issue with getting the right to discharge into and improve the Lake Cornelia pond. So with that, I guess, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Maples. Any questions, Mr. Maples? Commissioner Howard?
No question to Mr. Maple.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No questions.
Commissioner Wilmington?
I just want to commend Mr. Maples and his engineering staff. The design of this is great because this is all gravity-fed. A lot of our other projects, even the ones we're concerning there on Bellingham and other lakes, we've had install pumps and, you know, but they came up with a design that this was all gravity-fed. And so from a design and sustainability and long-term, this is a great, a great solution. And even right now, if you drive out at Three Oaks Park, it's flooded even as we speak. It was flooded from the weekend, so that area floods. Those properties that are in that area create some challenges, so this is just a great solution to a decades-old problem in that area. So I appreciate Mr. Maples and his staff for coming up with a solution.
Ms. Young?
No questions.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Maples. Mr. Davis, could you explain to us what the legal issue is that brings about this?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everybody, and I concur with Commissioner Wilmington. Bruce's office has done a great job getting us to where we are. And where we are is prepared to, with your permission and authorization, to file an eminent domain suit in Doherty Superior Court. We have an MAI appraisal for the value of the property. The initial step after filing the suit is the Superior Court judge. There will be what I'll call an administrative type of hearing for a special master where we will offer the MAI appraisal and or whatever number the special master fines, we'll pay that into court, and then that would enable the city to proceed with the work that was outlined by Mr. Maples. And of course, the property owner has a right to a trial. They can ask for a trial within 30 days of whatever amount is tendered into court, and then there would be a jury trial on the value. But we feel comfortable with the MAI appraisal and seek permission to move forward. Thank you.
And, Mr. Davis, just eminent domain would be where a local government or a utility basically says, "We're going to take this property and we're going to pay you for it." But there's a greater public use for it?
Yes, and the public purpose, I think, was made clear by Mr. Maples. Thank you for asking.
And also, this entity, Lake Park Recreation, what's the name of the entity?
Our Recreation Club, Inc.
Okay, and there's, what's brought about this is there's some questions about who the true owners are. Is that right?
Well, their minute book, which I'll say in need of help, and so Wallace Bonner at the Moore Clock Firm is helping them with that and representing them in this matter. Thank you.
Okay, and was that originally a group of homeowners in that around the park or the lake, as it may be?
Yes, sir, that's why, that's how it was set up, yes, sir.
And then over years of time, new homeowners might take an interest in it, might not take an interest in it?
That's right, and board of directors, you know, kind of come and go. So it's all, I understand it from Gary Lamar, the assistant solicitor, is helping and discussing it with him and Wallace Bonner. They have cleared up any problem about that.
Okay.
That being, Lake Park Recreation Club, Inc., is the owner. They have, there's a deed into them on the deed records. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Questions for the city attorney? Commissioner Howard?
No question for the city attorney.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No questions.
Commissioner Wilmington?
Again, I want to commend Mr. Davis and his group. The problem was how do you acquire the property? We had the engineering solution that's been sitting on the table for, I don't know, four years. I mean, we've had the solution, then we came up with the problem of how do you attain the property? I appreciate Mr. Davis working through that. I think the good thing for us as a commission is we push the decision of the money to the courts. So we're not in a position to give the money to an entity that may or may not have the proper signatures or the board of directors. There's, you know, we give it to the court, and anybody can go make a petition to the court to claim that the money is theirs. And so whether this group wants to make a petition to the court or a group of home, I mean, it's it's up to the court, and it removes the legality of our group and our board from that, and that allows engineering to move forward with the solution. So I appreciate Mr. Davis and Mr. Lamar coming up with the solution with Mr. Bonner that kind of removes that legality from us and allows us to move forward with the project and let our Superior Court decide what to do with the funds. So that's it. Thanks.
Ms. Young?
No questions.
Mr. Davis, of course, I, eminent domain, the only experience I've ever had is where a property owner comes and the DOT is taking their property and try to help them make sure they get the maximum value for it. But also for clarification, once this money's paid into the court, if there's any entity or individual out there who says, "Oh, I was responsible for that lake for years. I ought to get the money," it will be incumbent upon them to enter into the lawsuit, correct?
And that's exactly right. As Commissioner Wilmington mentioned, the money being in court, a Doherty Superior Court judge's signature will be required before any of that money is, I'll say, released out. So that is, you know, whatever amount is decided, the MAI appraisal is $84,500, so whatever is done is done only through a Superior Court signature. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis. And we will take action on this next Tuesday. Is that correct? Thank you, Mr. Stock. Okay, now we have three alcohol licenses. Thank you, Mr. Maples. Mr. Norman, good morning.
Thank you.
The first is a request submitted by Food and Fless of Albany for the seeking a beer and wine package license for a grocery store at 1032 West Gordon Avenue. Tell us about this. Marshall?
Yes, sir. This is Food and Fless, Albany, Inc., doing business as Piggly Wiggly's Food and Fless at 1032 West Gordon Avenue, has submitted an application requesting packaged beer and wine. The applicant is William K. McDaniel at 7280 Highway 90, Grand Ridge, Florida, and Cody G. McDaniel at 2049 Cascade Drive in Sneed, Florida. The local agent is Henry L. Ball at 5203 Delaware Avenue here in Albany. The type of business is a supermarket. The planning department identified this location as zone in C2 on a tierious street and in Ward 3. The distance requirement to nearest school is Monroe High School at 900 Lipit Drive, 4,000, over 4,000 feet, and the nearest church is the Church of the Living Word at 930 West Gordon Avenue at 900 feet, over 900 feet. This establishment was previously licensed as Harvey's Supermarket from 2003 to 2019. The police department has no open investigations at this location. Police calls over the past 12 months, there were no crime data for this location. The applicant placed an article in the Albany Herald at least 10 days prior to this meeting as notification to the general public that the application would be considered for approval. The applicant and location meets the criteria for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Stock. Any questions? Commissioner Howard?
No question.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Commissioner Fletcher?
No questions.
Commissioner Wilmington?
No questions.
Ms. Young?
Mr. Norman, I do notice, you know, this is the same area that I frequently refer to when we're talking about the number of alcohol licenses we choose to put in the area. From your map, I see we have six alcohol licenses basically within a probably little less than three-block radius, including the Jack's Liquor Store. Is that something that you're able to consider when you're approving these requests? Is the number of alcohol licenses within the area?
We cannot consider for beer and wine package for on-premise, I'm sorry, for off-premise consumption. The only thing that we consider is package store to package store or consumption to the consumption.
Okay, and also, I guess you do have it in your purview pursuant to, I guess, the category nine of the different things that we can consider in terms of the negative impact or the lowering of the quality or deterioration of the neighborhood? Did you consider that as well?
Yes, sir, I did look into that. This location is in dire need of a supermarket. The the impact the supermarket is going to have on the, in the area there, I don't think by placing beer and wine package there will have a grave issue on the community. As I said before, from 2003 all the way to 2019, the Harvey Supermarket's been at that same location, and it's always had an alcohol license there.
Okay, I probably would have to disagree with you because, again, as we've had these talks, we understand that there has been a actually a disturbing increase in crime with, in this particular area, even having a shootout right across the street from this particular location. And I will also note that this is, you know, just a mere few blocks from where the young nine-year-old was killed in a drive-by shooting, and that that area directly behind where, if we're looking at this map, that's that's known, you know, territory for crime, gangs, shootings, all of those things, and that's located, when we're looking at that map, right behind this area and actually east of that area as well. And again, until we get our hands around where these things can be located, we're going to be creating more problems when we allow these number of alcohol licenses to be close to each other. And also, we did have a meeting with the owners some months ago, and I'm actually disappointed because I remember him pledging that they would not seek an alcohol license at this location. You know, we're happy that they decided to locate within this area and happy that they're going to provide their services as a grocery store. The community is not in need of more alcohol, and just really, really disappointed in their decision to seek this out. I hope this is just maybe something that they're, you know, seeking, I don't know, I guess, to have but not necessarily implement and sell more alcohol at this particular location. But I'll look forward to trying to have a conversation with the owners about this decision. Thank you. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
I was, I don't recall the owners making any statement in that regard, but if.
Oh, I absolutely do, yes, sir.
Yes, okay, well, because I didn't hear it doesn't mean it wasn't made, but just I would say, some of the most full-service grocery stores in town have a beer and wine license?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we appreciate that.
Mayor, may I have a second turn to speak?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Norman, as far as you know, this is probably their eighth or ninth grocery store, I believe. Do they have any grocery stores that do not sell alcohol that you know of?
I'm not familiar, no, sir.
But pretty much every grocery store in town that you know of serves alcohol, beer and wine.
That's correct.
Okay. And Mayor, for the record as well, I was at the meeting. I did not hear that unless it was a private conversation, but at least for the whole commission that was there celebrating, thanking those, these folks, appreciative of them coming to our neighborhood to bring a grocery store, that comment was not made where I could have heard it. So I don't think that comment was made to the commission at large, but if it was made in a private conversation, that's unfortunate because nobody can sustain it or back it up except for the person in the private conversation. But I do appreciate these folks, and I want to go on the record to say I'm thankful to them to come to our city to put a grocery store in this vacant building, and there's absolutely no criticism from me for these folks. There's only appreciation for them doing what they're doing there. Thank you.
Mayor, could I say something?
Well, I guess we should go around the table, then let Ms. Young have her last say. Mayor Protem, any comments?
Mr. Norman, only thing I would say is that I think that if my mind is not being a little paranoid, I believe that Rubose in East Albin, the owners does not allow alcohol or beer to be sold in that store. It's a little grocery store in East Albin.
You're absolutely right. That's, yeah, that's one of the real old stores in the city.
It is, right.
Yes, sir, it is. So I stand corrected on that.
Mayor Protem?
No comment.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Well, I just want to say, if I'm not mistaken, I remember the group coming to us from Food for Less, and I point-blank asked them, "Was they going to sell beer and wine?" And they said yes. So I'm pretty sure that might be a matter of record. I could have made a mistake, but I'm like Commissioner Wilmington. I knew all along going into this that was a part of their decision. Thank you.
Ms. Young, any final comments?
Yes, sir. Well, I, like I say, I won't, you know, speak to people's recollection, no. I wouldn't be saying that if I didn't ask the owners with everybody present what they planned to do about alcohol license, and they said that they would not be seeking one. Again, this is about, you know, our duty. We know what, you know, business wants, business wants to do. They want to make money. We know alcohol is a moneymaker in our community. Unfortunately, alcohol is also connected to crime and the poor conditions we see in our neighborhood. But, you know, I guess, you know, in terms of celebrating, you know, businesses coming, we also want good businesses. We want businesses that care about the community. This is what these owners signaled when we met with them, that they do care about the community, and with my comments to them, they did say that they would not be seeking an alcohol license, and I took that to mean that they were going to be a good community partner. And again, I'll have a conversation with them. I've worked hard. Others have worked hard and advocated for a grocery store in South Albany, and we want a grocery store in South Albany. So, you know, don't take my comments to mean that we're not appreciative of a grocery store in South Albany, but we also have a responsibility to our neighborhood to stop putting things that negatively affect our, our community, our citizens in the neighborhood. That's all we're asking here. And again, you have six alcohol outlets within, you know, three blocks, three blocks of this area. We know the situation with crime over here. And also, I'm not sure, but I don't think, does the Save-A-Lot sell alcohol? On the east side, Save-A-Lot? I don't think they do.
I'll have to look at that one. I do know all the liquors, all the grocery. I do know all the liquor, all the grocery stores of the past five to 10 years have all made applications, but I would have to look into that one. I can't say for sure.
Yeah, I don't think they do so. It's not unheard of for grocery stores not to sell alcohol, and I think this is a case, and I thought the owners had pledged to do that. I'm sure that statement was made, whether it was a private conversation or not. And, you know, we'll let that be what it is, but I'll be speaking with them to see if this is really what they want to seek. But again, the responsibility is on us. If you care about those things, lower crime, less blight, less youth violence, less drive-bys killing nine-year-olds, you'll do something about it. You'll change what the decisions that you make concerning putting these things in poor marginalized neighborhoods. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an application submitted by Pitts Brothers, be running a convenience store at 418 North Slappy Boulevard, seeking a beer package license. I believe this is the old site of the old car dealership, isn't that correct?
Yes, sir, right next to Krispy Kreme. Yes, sir, this is Pitts Brothers Convenience Store, Inc., doing business as Apple Express at 418 North Slappy Boulevard. They had submitted an application requesting a package beer only. The applicant is Jerry D. Pitts from 134 Creek Ridge Drive, Leesburg, Georgia. His local agent is Lori E. Pitts at 1915 River Point Drive, Albany, Georgia. This type of business is a convenience store. The planning department identified this location zone as C2 on Anterior Street and in Ward 3. The distance requirement from the nearest school is Mary Acres Middle School at 1600 Florence Drive at 4,000 feet. The nearest church is Eager Avenue Grace Church at 1102 Eager Avenue. The establishment was formerly a vacant lot. The police department has no open investigations at this location. The police calls over the past 12 months, there were no crime data for this location. The applicant placed an article in the Albany Herald at least 10 days prior to this meeting as notification to the general public that this application will be considered for approval. The applicant and location meet the criteria for approval.
Any questions? Ms. Howard?
Mr. Norman, let me ask you a question. Albany High School is closed, right? But it's still used as, is it considered as a school or just as an office facility?
To my understanding, they use it as a training facility, and they may be using it as office also.
Okay, so, but it's not considered as a school?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Ms. Warburton?
No questions.
Ms. Young? Next application is submitted by Big Red Eggs LLC, doing business as Eggs Up Grill, seeking a wine consumption license at 2818 Old Dawson Road.
Yes, sir. This is Big Red Eggs LLC, doing business as Eggs Up Grill at 2818 Old Dawson Road in Suite 12. Has submitted an application requesting consumption of wine. Michael and Rebecca McNeil at 2259 Danbury Lane here in Albany, Georgia. The type of business is a restaurant, which is already in existence. The planning department identified this location, its zone is C2 on Anterior Street and in Ward 5. The distance requirement to the nearest school is Deerfield Windsor at 2500 Nottingham Way, so at 5,300 feet. The nearest church is Providence Grace City Church at 2504 Archwood Drive, graded in 2,800 feet. This establishment has been currently operating since 2016. The police department has no open investigations at this location. The police calls over the past 12 months, there was no crime data. The applicant placed an article in the Albany Herald at least 10 days prior to this meeting as notification to the general public that the application would be considered for approval. The applicant and the location meet the criteria for approval.
Any questions? Ms. Howard?
Mr. Norman, once again, is the church on Archwood, is it for sale or is it closed?
From my position, it's still open.
Okay. I thought I saw a for sale sign.
I know that there's most of the units that they use in that strip...
In that strip?
Were for sale.
Okay.
That's it.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Ms. Warburton?
No questions.
Ms. Young?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. The next two items are applications for a transfer of a license, if I'm correct. The first one's Rocket Burger Group LLC, doing business as La Luna, and they want to take over the license granted to the restaurant at 1935 Dawson Road, a beer and wine consumption license.
Yes, sir. This is the Rocket Burger Group LLC, doing business as La Luna at 1935 Dawson Road, which is the old Rocket. Has submitted an application requesting consumption of liquor, beer and wine. The applicant is William T. Henry at 2506 Peasant Drive here in Albany, Georgia. The type of business is a restaurant. The planning department identified this location zone as C1 on Anterior Street and in Ward 4. There is no distance requirement on the transfer. However, the nearest church is Lake Park Elementary at 605 Metallar, which is graded in 3,600 feet. And the nearest church is Dawson Road Church of Christ at 2115 Dawson Road, graded in 1,000 feet. The establishment was previously the Rocket since 2017. The department, the police department, has no open investigations at this location. Police calls for service over the past 12 months, there were three miscellaneous calls. The applicant placed an article in the Albany Herald 10 days prior to this meeting as notification to the general public that the application would be considered for approval. The applicant and location meet the criteria for approval.
Any questions? Ms. Howard?
No question.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Ms. Warburton?
No questions.
Ms. Young?
No questions.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. And the last item, also seeking a transfer, looks like it's Shahaj LLC, seeking a beer, transfer of beer and wine package license for the business at 1608 South Jefferson Street.
Yes, sir. Shahaj LLC, doing business as HRH Mart at 1608 South Jefferson Street, has submitted an application requesting a transfer of packaged beer and wine. The applicant is Manish and Sanjay Kumar Patel at 186 in Eden Borough Drive, Leesburg, and the local agent is Nathaniel Nichols, Jr., at 1,005 East Fourth Avenue here in Albany. The type of business is a convenience store. The planning department identified this location zone as C2 on Anterior Street and in Ward 6. There is no distance requirement on transfer, however, the nearest school is Monroe High School at 900 Lipid Drive, graded in 4,000 feet. And the nearest church is Greater Pines Chapel at 1203 South Jefferson, graded in 1,500 feet. This establishment was previously licensed as Coachman Grocery from 2005 to 2014, Butchers Wholesale Mart Outlet from 2014 to 2019, HRH Fashion from 2020 to 2021. The police department has no open investigations at this location. The police calls for service over the past 12 months, there was one property crime and one miscellaneous. The applicant placed an article in the Albany Herald 10 days prior to this meeting as notification to the general public that this application will be considered for approval. The applicant and location meet the criteria for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Norman. Any questions? Ms. Howard?
Mr. Norman, is 1608 South Jefferson Street, is that in that little strip mall?
Yes, sir, the old Coachman Park area right there, that strip mall.
Okay. Where it used to be Charlene Pearl?
Yes, sir.
Didn't we have something last year from this establishment?
Yes, sir.
Is it the same one?
This is the same one. This is a new owner this year.
That's it, thanks.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Ms. Warburton?
No questions.
Ms. Young?
Yes, sir. With these convenience stores, do we have a, I guess, kind of like what we have with restaurants, a certain percentage of what their sales are in terms of, you know, groceries per, for alcohol, similar to what we have with restaurants where they can be classified as restaurants or a bar? You have to have so much of your percentage of your sales be food instead of alcohol?
No, sir, we don't. What you're speaking of is restaurants serving on Sunday, where they have to meet at least 50% of their gross sales from their sale of prepared foods or their other outlets, retail. That only applies to full bona fide restaurants and restaurants and establishments that wants to sell on Sunday.
Okay. Well, and the reason why I bring this up is, you know, I've been in this store a couple of times and they have, you know, scant groceries in there, but what they do have in there is, you know, beer and other alcoholic products. And then they also have, I guess with this last owner that just left, they also have these gambling machines. And that's kind of what you see in a lot of our poorer neighborhoods is these gambling machines and, you know, alcohol and Lotto tickets and those types of stores. And those, I think, do lead to the poor quality of our neighborhoods and don't really bring anything of value to our community. One of the things I'd like us to see is probably that we need to look at these locations in terms of how much alcohol they're selling versus how much groceries they're selling. One of the selling points that, not the owner, but the, I guess, the landlord of this spot was that the community needed, you know, groceries in this area. And like I said, it's very dubious to me in terms of how much groceries they're actually providing, you know, versus how much alcohol they're actually selling in this location and other stuff like the gambling machines and things like that. So that may be something where we're considering these, changing these regulations, and I'd like if Mr. Davis could look into that, if that's a possible requirement that we can have of convenience stores is that they have so much in sales of other things besides alcohol. Because I think that's a particular business model that hurts a particular segment of our community that, you know, they say they're going in, oh, we're going to provide groceries, but they sell more alcohol than they sell groceries. So if we could look at that, Mr. Davis, I'd like to see that in our discussions on how to beef up our alcohol ordinances. But that's all. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a recommendation to purchase two lighted runway closure markers for the airport from Halbright, Inc., Bernard, Minnesota, it looks like. And Mr. Williams, you speaking to this?
Yes, sir. Good morning, everyone.
And Mr. Cookson, you going to explain to us what these devices are?
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Williams, could Mr. Cookson go first?
Okay.
And then explain to us what we need and you tell us how we're going to get it?
Okay.
All right?
Sure. So these runway closure markers are lighted Xs that go at the ends of each runway whenever there's a noncompliant condition on the runways. That could be anything from routine maintenance, I'm sorry, let me speak up in the mic, I'm sorry about that. It could be used for routine maintenance to anything from a noncompliant condition, something from like a lightning strike, which seems to be fairly common apparently in this area, unfortunately. So this is a safety indicator for any pilot who's wanting to land at the airport, basically telling them that the airport, or at least that runway on the airport is not open for business, that you have to use the other runway that's available for us. Any further questions on that?
What does that, does that mean you're going to put these on a runway that's not used?
On a runway that's either temporarily closed or currently not used at that time, yes. So it could happen, like I said, from a maintenance standpoint, or it could happen because there's some kind of detrimental safety hazard that's on the runway at the time.
All right. You say, you use the term safety hazards, noncompliant conditions, those don't sound good for an airport, but thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Yes, we're trying to get two lighted runway closure markers. This is by way of bid reference 22-002. It was advertised in Albany Herald, the local access channel, city website and Georgia Procurement Registry. Five firms were directly solicited, three submitted bids, and we are wanting to make a recommendation for the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which is Halbright, for a total expenditure of $41,380.
Any questions for Mr. Cookson or Mr. Williams? Ms. Howard?
No question.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Commissioner Warburton?
No questions.
Ms. Young?
So these markers, so you're saying that they are, I guess, either battery powered or something that's auxiliary to our regular power system? So y'all just roll them out?
Yes, sir, they're portable and they're fueled by generators that are already on the units.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. How many runways do you have at the airport, Ms. Cookson?
So we have two runways that each have two runway designators on them. So effectively, you could say we have four runways because we have two. You can use each end as a runway, is the way the FAA looks at it.
Okay. All right. Ms. Stock, can I just, again, being a little persnickety, these pros and cons, none of the cons are really cons. I mean, failure to acquire and place the appropriate markers may result, those are reasons we have to do it. I mean, I would think the only cons were this is unbudgeted expense or we didn't have but three responses, you know, but then the other thing, failure to acquire and utilize the marker would increase the liability. That's obviously not a con, but, yes, but, okay. Thank you, Mr. Williams, Ms. Cookson, thank you. Now, next, we have, can we do this the same way?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Williams, if you don't mind, let's let the chief explain to us what he's asking and you'll tell us how we're going to locate them.
Mm-hmm.
All right. Good morning, Chief.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the city commission. It's good to see all of you this morning and be back for our second request of you of this item. Today, we are before you to request 38 self-contained breathing apparatus. These are the SCBA's, of course, that the firefighters wear on their back, the tank harness that they wear when they go in very dangerous environments to fight fires and handle other emergencies. The request also asks for 80 MSA G1 cylinder rubber bumper retainer kits and 38 MSA G1 rechargeable battery packs. This is, of course, a, this is a multi-year request. This last year, we came before you, made a request. We'll be back again to hopefully complete this whole request out over the next five years, but this is the second request here today.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Williams, can you tell us about how you locate and purchase these items?
Yes, sir. This is by way of bid reference 22-008. It was advertised in the Albany Herald, local access channel, city website and Georgia Procurement Registry. We solicited five vendors directly with two submitting bids. We are recommending utilizing the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which would be Fireline, Inc. The fire department has purchased products from Fireline, Inc. in the past, and they are, have provided satisfactory service. This is also going to give them the MSA brand, which will allow them to maintain uniformity among the brands that they're using right now with SCBA. So we are recommending that for $209,330 to go with Fireline, Inc., which is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Any questions for the chief or Mr. Williams? Ms. Howard?
No question.
Mayor Protem?
No question.
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
Ms. Warburton?
Yeah, Chief, so last year, you're saying we bought about this same quantity last year?
I think the, uh, last year, our first purchase, give me a moment, it was, uh, just a tad bit, um, small. Last year we, um, let's see, the initial purchase, uh, last year, uh, I believe was for twenty-five units, I believe.
And you were saying there'll be one more round?
Actually, we'll be back until twenty-twenty-five. Uh, yes, we asked for, I have the last year, last year's, um, uh, one now. It was, uh, uh, for twenty-five, uh, last time.
Okay. And you got one more round, you're saying, next year and you'll be?
Actually.
All changed out?
We will be, we will be back until, um, uh, the last, uh, request will be in FY twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five. Uh, so we will, um, uh, come back, um, with a similar request, um, in, um, uh, for twenty-three, twenty-four and twenty-five because our SCBA's are set, all of them, um, set to expire in twenty-twenty-five. So this will slowly phase them in. That initial purchase for that whole, well, all of the SCBA's, I think somewhere around a mi- a little bit over a million dollars for the entire five-year span. And so this is broken up over those five years. So this is our second time appearing before you, uh, for this. So actually, we'll be back, we'll be back three more times.
Okay. And does the county, uh, for their stations, they purchase the same equipment for the stations that are in the county? Or is this something that we provide through our service delivery?
Yes, sir. This is one of those items that's provided, uh, part of the service delivery strategy.
Okay. Okay.
Now, there are other items that, that do not, but this is one of those that, uh, is, is part of that.
Part of the service, the, the service we provide?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Ms. Young.
No questions. Thank you, Chief.
Um, uh, could we get, Chief, could we get, um, so we, if we were fully staffed, we'd have a hundred and sixty firefighters?
Actually, in fire, we have a hundred and seventy-seven, uh, people in, in, in fire.
Okay. Now, um, these tanks, you, when you, when you go, when a truck goes to a fire, there have, you have some tanks in reserve, right?
We do.
You explained that to us before, but, um...
I did, yes, sir. Uh, so, um, so, uh, what happens is, is we have eleven engines.
Yes, sir.
And so each one of those engines carries, um, uh, four of these self-contained breathing apparatus, this SCBA. Um, we have two aerial trucks, uh, the trucks with the big ladder on top. You'll see one is at station six and the other is at station one downtown. Uh, so they carry four each as well. Then you have reserve units. Uh, we have, um, three reserve fire trucks. Um, so that's thirteen units. And so that's a total of thirty-nine SCBA's that, that you would have. And I, I can continue on through, but...
Okay.
Uh, training has, um, we have, uh, SCBA's in training. We have SCBA's for hazardous materials. Um, uh, our engine reserves at twelve, um, our ladder, uh, reserved at four. And, um, and so, um, um, as you make your way through those numbers, um, that will take you to a hundred and twenty-seven. So, uh, twelve in training, eight in hazmat, um, three engine reserves at twelve, one ladder reserved at four. That's a hundred and twenty-seven. Uh, you have, um, eighteen, which is seventy-five percent of a battalion based on twenty-four people. So basically, uh, what that means is, is that you would, you would look at your, uh, look at a battalion, for example, and you take, if we ever had to bring back in a, a crew or something like that, um, you'd look at your battalion and you say, okay, what is seventy-five percent of your battalion? That would be based on twenty-four people. So that is eighteen SCBA's additionally. That takes you to one hundred and forty-five total SCBA's.
Okay.
And if you look back at our initial request back when we started this whole five-year march toward replacing all of them, you'll see that the total at, in the beginning was a hundred and forty-five. So that's where that number comes from. It's made up of a lot of different places.
But could, could we just get the number, um, so basically what you're telling us is over five fiscal years, I want to completely transition into this, um, MSA G1?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And that's a hundred and forty-five.
Okay. Could we just get those numbers of how, how, what, what we're looking for every year?
Uh, yes, you can. And, and we provided that, um, you know, when we made the whole, uh, request, but be happy to send that back to you. And, um, and, and that first year was a little bit different. I mentioned last year because last year we bought all the, um, supplemental equipment that goes along with that. So that was a little bit of smaller request instead of the thirty. So we planned, we, we'd end up doing twenty-five and then bought all the accessories that went with it last year. So now we're just down to now, uh, marching out those SCBA requests now, marching toward that one hundred and forty-five.
All right. Thank, thank you, Chief. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, Ms. Stock, the, um, the cons aren't really cons. What it says is by purchasing, not purchasing, fire department will have to use, continue to utilize worn-out equipment and the current air packs are ten years old. I mean, those are reasons, not, um, cons. I mean, I would think the cons would be a possibility that you're going to have new technology. I mean, we're, we're looking to purchase these things for ten years and if some new sophisticated breathing apparatus comes out and we've already invested in this, you can have some problems, but I, that's kind of speculative. But again, the, the cons aren't really cons, but...
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll put some guidelines around how to write the pros and cons.
All right, okay. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Williams, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next item on the agenda is, uh, a request to authorize a supplemental grant agreement. And, um, there was a shortfall, I believe, in a, um, project to the airport. Is that right, Mr. Hamilton? And, um, the state has allocated, um, funds to cover the deficiencies. Is that, is that correct? Okay. Um, it, did Mr. Wright sign up to speak to this?
We did.
Okay. Hold on, Mr. Wright. We'll, we'll let these gentlemen talk and then, um, or how, how would y'all rather do it? Would y'all rather Mr. Wright go or? Sir?
Good lad.
Okay. Ms. Cookson, you have the floor.
Good morning again. Uh, so as you had previously mentioned, there was a project underrun in a former project, uh, that was the runway one-six-three-four project. Uh, that funding is a hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, that funding is set to expire in, uh, November of this year. So the supplemental grant agreement, what it does, it authorizes the full amount of the five hundred and twenty-two thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars for the GDOT grant for the, uh, General Aviation Terminal and Hangar Project, uh, at the airport. That's going to be starting here, uh, relatively soon. And it also reauthorizes that funding that was the underrun of a hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred dollars for an additional two years to be incorporated with that project. So this money was allocated, or at least it's been allocated by GDOT for that project, for the, uh, General Aviation Terminal and Hangar Project. Uh, this is just our formal acceptance of it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Cookson. Sam, can you have anything you want to add? Okay. Any questions for Ms. Cookson or Mr. Hamilton? Commissioner Howard?
No question.
Mayor Protem.
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Ms. Warburton?
No questions.
Ms. Young?
No questions.
Now, um, Scott, this is a con that if you don't take the money, it's going to go back to the state. That, that, that would be a con. And, um, likewise, is there any local match? Do, do we have to come up with a match on this, Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, sir. Our local match is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Okay. But would that be with the supplemental grant?
Yeah, there'd be a local match with that, too.
Okay. Well, that would be a con as well, I would, I would think, that we should know about. But thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Ms. Cookson, thank you. Mr. Wright?
Well, greetings to you. And I want to tell you, there are a lot of cons more than really hits the eye. In the first paragraph here, one of the things we're explaining to you is that this is just another example of reverse Robin Hood. And that's because the GDOT, Commissioner Morrissey of GDOT and others had the money all the while. They're just playing rope-a-dope. Now, if this community was eight percent Anglo-Saxon and white, we wouldn't be having this conversation. If you read the paper this morning, one of the things that points out is the city of Albany, the highest in the state of Georgia and the twelfth highest in the nation according to the United States Census Bureau. We brought information to that, but the reason we have so much is because when we get money that are designed to come to the pool, look at the Hilton Hotel and look at DOT. DOT created a program that we're going to build a palace for Eagles of America out there for fifteen, twenty million dollars and only let two black people work. Now, that, that, if this was eight percent white, this would not happen. And Commissioner Morrissey, I talked with him personally and told him, if he tell you otherwise, he is simply lying of being reckless with the truth. They had the money all the time because every time I go to the gas station or you go to the gas station, fifty cents out of every dollar go to fund GDOT and USDOT. Now, if anybody tell you anything else, they are simply lying of being reckless with the truth. I spent thirty-five years in the classroom teaching these kind of things and trying to open people up. Look at the second paragraph. The city of Albany and the city staff, basically, a lot of your staff is clueless and do not understand what they're doing or why. If, if you ever seen Robin Hood in television, uh, you know, Robin Hood always Anglo-Saxon, but he always looked out for the poor. I, I seen one variation where I think Morris Chestnut played, uh, it was a cartoon where there was a black Robin Hood. Can you imagine? Same thing about Tarzan. If all these crazy things. Now, your city staff is telling you this is a good deal. We're going to build a palace for Eagles of America out there. Eagles of America make ten million dollars a year and they pay us sixteen thousand dollars for the rent. And they haul that ten million dollars to Motley. And then two black people get to work on a fifteen million dollar contract and LRA is notorious for jacking up the price with change order. So that palace we're building for Eagles of America out there is only going to benefit three people. Adam Mathis, who owned Eagles of America, and they made so much money, you know, they got two private jet planes. They, they just fly to work. They got Eagles of Albany and Eagles of Motley. Adam Mathis, his wife Diane and his son are only going to benefit from this deal. And you got your staff jumping up. If you look at the papers tomorrow, the reason we have so much poverty is when money's supposed to come here, it never get to us. If this community was eight percent white, we would not be having this conversation. We would simply not. Now, how is this a good deal? We already paid for the DOT, Georgia DOT and USDOT, sending money to DC and Atlanta, and it come back here and we get two, well, they're not, well, they're qualified and I'm not getting it, that we're going to handle that in court. But you going to get, tell me that LRA, Eagles of America, get nine, eight percent of the money, we get two percent. We've already paid for it and it's a good deal. Now, you can look at Tarzan and see that doesn't make sense. You over there in Africa and all the black people got to run away when you come. Even the elephants run away on Tarzan. I was looking at that and, you know, that's kind of...
But one minute, Mr. Wright.
Well, you ought to be changing the rules every time I call. You're goodness. Look at the third paragraph. One of the things I have to point out is when we look at these things, see, you can eliminate poverty with jobs and education, but when the jobs are supposed to come here and then you go and steal the jobs and then ask the Census Bureau, why are there so much poverty in Albany? We are twelfth in the nation according to the report in poverty. Well, if you steal the jobs, how can we come out of poverty? Supposed to come here and you take it and then you give me three minutes explaining it to you.
Five. You got fifteen seconds left.
Oh, wait, I had to go a little five minutes?
Yeah, that's four.
I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I'm going to bring my own watch when I come next time. And, and that's going to be on the next, because I want to speak to this thing about the budget. That is a joke. See if there any question?
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Now, everything you need, Mayor, is in there. And you, you going to have to start looking at Tarzan and Robin Hood a little bit more and then maybe you can understand it. See if there any question?
Okay. Any, any questions for Mr. Wright? Ms. Howard?
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Uh, look at this and then I appreciate you.
One of the things though, you got to understand, you, you're not going to be eliminating this, the, what, what this argument, what this is pointing out to you is there's a ricochet effect of what you do on here in the commission or not do. When you steal money from people and then try to justify it with your staff, uh, Mayor, have you, have any of you ever seen, uh, the jazz singer Al Jolson? See, Al Jolson pretending he was black, made millions of dollars. Made millions of dollars, going to the black club and then commenting and mimicking their attributes. Now, we have a little of that going on here with the city and, and, and the staff pretending this is a good deal. So...
All right, Mr. Wright, thank you. Mayor Protem, any questions for Mr. Wright?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Ms. Warburton?
No questions.
Ms. Young?
Um, yes, sir. This, um, Georgia DOT, uh, supplemental agreement, um, it, well, I guess, you know, for, for the laypeople, can you just kind of break down what, what's not happening with it? Why, why are you objecting to it? You know, I know we talk about the, the two percent of these federal contracts are only seem to make it to, to black contractors. But what, what in terms of this body, uh, do you suggest we do about that situation?
Well, one, one of the things that, uh, should happen is, uh, the representation and the manifestation ought, ought to be commensurate. You see, one of the things is that when GDOT, GDOT sent five of their experts at us, you know, because we've been doing, we worked on this thing, the, uh, grant agreement here. We worked on this thing all the way back in two thousand seventeen. We presented this whole, this whole thing to the city commission and the mayor at that time. We also met with Commissioner Morrissey. And you have to understand that when I worked as the DB compliance manager for the city of Albany for three years, at the same, at the airport, where they, where they going to build this palace for Eagles of America, went and pulled their jackets and I know what they do or don't do. So what I'm saying is that the trade-off ought to benefit the people that were designed to benefit, not three people. Eagles of America have three owners. You got Adam Mathis, his wife Diane and his son. They're the only ones who are going to benefit. And GDOT, through this agreement, are saying they have found some money. But the point, first of all, Commissioner Young, the money was already there. They didn't find it. They knew that all the time. They knew what it was going to cost. And if, if the law had been followed, the law requires you have, have a thirty-day window where the public is notified about what you're doing, when you're doing it, where you're doing it, and why you're doing it. See, none of that happened. The only thing we got was we got an email from KWA and he tweeted, we're going to spend a lot of money in Albany. You ought, you ought to know about it. And that's all. See, if, if you follow the law and do what the law requires, the thing wouldn't happen, but that never happened. We didn't get a twenty-four hour notice, not the thirty days. The law requires you are supposed to give thirty-day notice so people can comment and see. Now, what we did do is we went and set up a black media company so we could have a black television station put the news out there. But that's, if the public knew this was going on, there's no way if this community was eight percent white, you would let ninety percent of the money go to African America. That, that just would not happen. I don't care how you look at it. So that's what I'm saying, Commissioner Young. The money come here and then your staff get over here and zigzag and say, this is a good deal. And if you follow the law, not be any problem. But when you make your own laws, we're going to always have a problem or we're going to always enter from court. Because that's what, they didn't follow the law. The law required you give a thirty-day notice of what you're doing, where you're doing it, why you're doing it and who is doing it. Do, do, do any of you know who the two black contractors are that's supposed to work out there? It, it, what forty-nine CFR twenty-six require is this. It requires that you have to use minority business subject only to availability. You cannot come up with a numerical number. The availability means as long as they're out there, you got to find some way to use it. That did not happen. That's why we got so much poverty. See, the city makes its own law and your staff clueless, get up there and say it's a... a good deal. How is ninety-eight percent going to other people for money that was designed to come to the impoverished, low-income, who are qualified to do the work? How is that fair? What do you expect to happen? Why do you, how do you end up being twelfth in the nation of poverty when people are robbing from you, stealing from you? And we had the conversation with Commissioner Morrissey. Now, he admitted he was new to the job, he didn't know, but many of your staff are in the same position. So if that had happened, if people knew about it, this place probably be full, like you see on Tarzan. If black people knew that you're gonna build a palace for Eagles of America, and he's carrying ten million dollars away every year, got two private planes, him, his wife, they can fly to work, fly to work every day, and that is a good deal? Something has to be wrong that period when we look at. So that's, what I'm saying is, if we had gotten to that point and did it, and then there was no black business who would do the work, that would be different. But I did this work for the city for three years, so I know what you're supposed to do. I guarantee you, we will not have what the law require we had in the last thirty years. I know it because I've been following it. Every time that Albany Dorte, it's called Albany Dorte, not Albany Aviation Commission, Albany Dorte County, that's why they're in the lawsuit. It's called Albany Dorte Aviation Commission. We put all these things there, all these things have a rippling effect. So if they had done that, it would be different. I mean, see, the citizens already paid and fund DOT, whether it's USDOT, or Georgia DOT, or Indiana DOT, or California DOT, the public pays for them before the money get there. That money did not just suddenly rise. I mean, Commissioner Morrissey knew they had the money all the time, because every time you go to the gas station, fifty cents out of every dollar go to DOT.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next item on the agenda is a proposal to revise the policy for the Albany Transit to, I guess, comply with FTA requirements. Is that correct, Mr. Hamilton?
Yes, sir. This is much like when we came before you last month with the transit procurement policy. In January of 2018, Albany Transit Drug and Alcohol Policy was approved and submitted to the Georgia Department of Transportation. And so now, FTA has come out with some more requirements, and has requested that we revise our policy to incorporate those requirements and make some administrative changes. We submitted those changes to you on an edit sheet, so you can see what those changes are. We will come back before this body on the 28th at your regular meeting for approval.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Ms. Howard, you have anything to add?
No, sir, I do not.
Okay. Ms. Howard, you are the Drug and Alcohol Program Manager?
Yes, I am for the city of Albany and also over the FTA Transit System.
Would you tell us what the Drug and Alcohol Program Manager does?
Yes, sir. For transit, I am the DER as well, along with Ms. Leslie Bryant, who's the project manager. So we conduct random quarterly drug tests for the transit system, which are ran on the Department of Transportation Guidelines. And so this policy here that we bringing up is just to make sure we stay up to date on our randoms, which are done, like I said, quarterly. We send each other for fifty percent of drug testing and ten percent of alcohol testing, which is done on a quarterly basis for all transit employees. As far as the overall drug program for the city of Albany, we do random drug testing as well for all employees that are either in sensitive positions, such as public safety, CDL holders, which are like a utilities, heavy work, heavy equipment operators, or public works, employees, utilities, all those things fall underneath our random program, which is done on an annual basis. But as far as transit, we have to maintain those on a quarterly basis, because we are audited every year on the transit program, which DOT comes in and does an audit with us, and they question us on our random program, which is done annually, but quarterly basis for all employees.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Any questions for Mr. Hamilton or Ms. Howard? Mr. Howard?
No question.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Ms. Warburton?
Just a couple of quick questions. So I guess all employees, new employees, are drug tested before they start employment?
Yes, for pre-employment as well, all employees, if they hold a CDL and it's required for the position, then they are tested for DOT guidelines. If they're a non-CDL holder, then it's non-DOT. But for transit employees, it will always be an FTA guideline for them to have a DOT pre-employment. They will have to clear that before they start employment. If it is positive, of course, then they are ineligible for hiring.
Okay. I may get booed out of the room by my peers, but I guess the commission, we don't do drug tests when we start our employment?
No, sir, not that I'm aware of. It wouldn't come through us unless it's come through an outside agency, but we haven't ran you all for drug testing.
There's a law that says that's unconstitutional. I mean, case it says it's unconstitutional.
Really? Okay. See, I'm not a lawyer.
He can if he wants to.
I'm not a lawyer, so he corrected me, but...
Well, Nathan can get you a memo on that.
All right. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Young?
No questions, thank you.
Um, Mr. Stock, this is the last time I bring this up. Like I say, a con, failure to adopt the new policy will result in non-compliance with FTA. We don't really have that option. I mean, you know, but I would think the con would be the increased expense of more frequent monitoring, you know, and just, let me ask you something. Now, if somebody's a dispatcher for Albany Transit, that's not a sensitive position, is it?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. What if somebody's just an administrative assistant at Albany Transit?
The administrative assistant, they have one, they are not tested.
Okay.
But our dispatches are, our vehicle technicians are, the vehicle mechanics, and our bus operators are...
Okay. All right, I see that. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Ms. Howard, you all have a good day. The next item on the agenda is an update on the Wynn Dixie Building and a request for resolution of support. Commissioner Young and Ms. Amber Bell. Good morning, Ms. Bell.
Good morning. So again, the Southwest Georgia Project is an established organization that has been based in Albany for over fifty years, and we continue to seek to reimagine, transform, and retrofit the old Wynn Dixie Building located at 200 East Oak Ridge Drive. In June, we completed alongside yielding Wakefield and McGee the renderings and design of the building, and we have successfully secured one hundred thousand dollars from the state budget, and then two million from the federal government with T-HUD funds. We are about to submit a request to the state, an application to the state for fiscal recovery funds, and the application will be requests for capital funds to retrofit the facility, which would boost infrastructure for access to fresh fruits and vegetables. It'll provide support and incubation for small businesses, and a wellness and training and healthcare support for the community at large. I am requesting from the commission a resolution to support the application that we'll submit before or on October 31st.
Okay. Ms. Young, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, just to thank Ms. Bell for her hard work in bringing this project as far as she has with the drawings. I've actually toured or presented a lot of the drawings around the community at my town halls, and the people of Ward Six are very excited to see and reimagine that property at the old Wynn Dixie. And also, we're very excited for the economic development that'll provide for our local farmers, as well as, you know, deal with a lot of issues in terms of food insecurity and hopefully help the food desert, because it will create an economy for, you know, many local farmers who, and smaller farmers, who can't necessarily get their produce into the stores. This will allow them to have a place to process their crops, process their harvest and package it, so that we can sell it as well. And we're looking for so many great things from this initiative, so I would just, you know, hope that we can get behind this and keep moving this forward. We're very thankful to Congressman Bishop, who provided earmark funding for this project, as well as State Representative Winford Dukes, who spearheaded the first initial state funding. So, great job, Southwest Georgia Project, and look forward to bringing this even more into manifestation. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. Bell? Ms. Howard?
No question, but thanks for the work you done, and look forward to seeing the day I can go in and buy some fresh fruit.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions, thank you.
Ms. Warburton?
Yeah, Ms. Bell, so I guess the overall idea of this location is to be kind of like a farmer's market type of...
So, we envision the, we're calling it a community hub for now, so it'll be multipurpose. Part of the building will serve as a farmer's market, the other part aggregation and distribution. We're interested in serving the school system on a much larger level, so we'll be bringing in fresh fruits and vegetables from the farm, and hopefully distributing them to the school system. But there are also other uses of the facility. Albany Community Together is interested in setting up commercial kitchen space that'll allow food entrepreneurs, such as caterers, to use that space for licensure for their businesses. They're also interested in business incubation, what they currently do, provide training and support to small businesses. And we worked closely with Phoebe Putney prior to COVID-19, and actually did a visit to Minneapolis to see a model that Pillsbury United, a nonprofit there, and North Hospital, the 501(c)(3) hospital there, that have a partnership in North Minneapolis to combat the social determinants of health that are impacting that community. So we also envision the opportunity to set up some health and wellness opportunities inside of the facility.
Okay. So the money you've already received, that's part of your capital to build out facility equipment?
Right.
And then the money you're seeking from the state, is it to...
So, so there's a huge renovation cost associated with the facility. The building was built in 1989, and since the flood, it's in a flood plain, so we have to raise the floor by a foot. And the building has been completely, like, they've taken all the copper out, so we have to do new electric, electrical wiring. And the building, the roof was affected in the 20, with the 2017 tornadoes, and then the hurricane in 2018, so it's a completely new roof. So it's essentially just the shell, so the renovation of the building, the renovation costs associated with the building is huge. So small equipment costs, but Albany Community Together is focusing heavily on raising money, and have already raised six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to stock, or to purchase the equipment for the commercial kitchen.
I may be speaking out of ignorance, but can you raise the floor a foot without compromising the wall and the structure of the building?
That's why it's so expensive. We are blessed that the ceiling height is high enough, so what the architects are presenting is that they'll just pour the concrete, and everything else that has to be changed and taken out would have to be taken out regardless, because one of the examples we have is that the, when the building was built, one of the codes of how the concrete retains moisture has changed, so because we're updating, it has to be changed anyway. So there will have to be some amendments to the building, but all of it will have to be done regardless.
And I guess you've done an analysis that tearing a building down and building a new building is not as, is more expensive than doing what you're talking about, because renovations can be...
Yeah, and we've even discussed the idea of another location, but our commitment to South Albany and increasing the opportunity to create some catalysts for that area and community is more of a focus for us. And we do believe with the support of, you know, federal agencies, USDA, and a couple of others, that we can raise the money to retrofit this facility. And we just started the capital campaign in July, and we're already about, at about 2.7 million.
Okay. Thank you for fielding my questions, appreciate it. Thanks for your work.
Ms. Young?
Just thank you again, and I hope that your application is successful with the state.
Um, Ms. Bell, I would just ask, I mean, the commission, you know, on the separation project, we're requesting letters of support from other county commissions and other organizations in Southwest Georgia, and I think that's basically what the Southwest Georgia Project is doing here today. The letters of support, we understand, from other organizations enhances the prospects of a project obtaining funding or being approved. Ms. Bell, what I would ask, so you said yielding in Wakeford, have they done the blueprints? And you said in June, or they retained in June?
So, they have completed the drawings, renderings for the design of the building. And what we are, we are going to do, or what we're doing now, is fundraising to be able to launch that design. So we want, the project budget is around 10 million. We want to raise five, and then we'll use a new market tax credit to finance the rest. So what we have to do before we can get that new mark, market tax credit would be the blueprints. We've completed a business plan, but we will have to complete the blueprints, but won't be ready to do that until we can finance the construction of the building, if that makes sense.
Okay, so what you're saying is basically, we gotta get to the five million threshold before we're gonna commission blueprints?
Right.
Okay, well, all right. And, but you have a business plan?
Yes.
All right, well, I would just ask, I mean, I'm certainly, we talking about it before, I'm certainly, there's a need here, no question about it, and we would certainly support it, but I would ask that we be provided with the schematics of the drawings that you have, and also the business plan, when you get to the point that you feel safe sharing it with the, I mean, others?
Yeah, we can share it now. I will admit that the business plan was completed with the Southwest Georgia Project only in mind, and we're working backwards to include Albany Community Together, still waiting on what it would look like with Phoebe because of COVID and all that they have going on. They haven't been able to make it back to the table. So we can get you the initial business plan that we have.
Well, no, no, I mean, if you want to wait, if you've got another vision, let's see where you're going, because I mean, I certainly commend your efforts. I mean, the hospital needs to be involved, because the bad health outcomes we have, we're gonna have to change people's habits, we all know that, and it's probably more difficult to change your diet at 40 than it is at 16. One problem we've got that we don't address is the unhealthy lunches that are being served in our, in our schools, and the prepackaged food, and, but...
Yeah, and my background is in wellness and population health, which is why we're so committed to this facility, this specific location.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bell. I appreciate you coming and talking to us today.
Thank you.
And do y'all have a proposed resolution, or do y'all want us to draw that up?
We still propose one, but what is your preference?
I mean, I wouldn't know the difference, but like I say, I've been working with these, I mean, I've been making some phone calls to different county commissions, and some county commissions say, "Well, you send us what you got, and we'll..."
We could share bullet points that we think need to be included.
Okay, we'll put some together. Thank you, ma'am. Next item on the agenda is a proposed budget amendment. Good morning, Mr. Carter.
Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and your support this past week, as we've worked through several iterations of the budget adjustment that is presented to you this morning. As you can see in your agenda packet, the original anticipated amount was almost 3.9 million dollars. Working with you all this week, this past week, we have modified the request amount now to 2.9 million. That's a $1 million decrease, thanks to the work you guys were willing to put into the process, and we do thank you for that. The funding source for the 2.9 million is the fund balances from last year's general fund. This is your budget, thanks mostly to the CARES Act fund that was reimbursed for... Fiscal year budget, thanks mostly to the CARES Act funds that was reimbursed for COVID-related purchases, and also for the hard work that each department does that diligently monitors our operational expenditures to ensure that we only spend what we need to, and we're also very committed to being good stewards of the money and the funds that's entrusted to us. The enterprise funds will utilize net income already accumulated during this fiscal year to fund their proportions of the budget adjustment, so we're not asking for any increases in rates or taxes as we bring this adjustment to you. The incentives we will discuss this morning is in addition to others that we have already been, that has already been enacted, such as the partnerships with the Dorton County School System and the Albany State University for employee access to their full suite of sporting events. We have also partnered with the Artisan Alliance for free access to She-Haw, the River Aquarium, and Ponatiska. Finally, employees also have free access to the Civil Rights Institute. We're looking at several more times as we create more partnerships around the city with other vendors, other institutions. I'll speak to each of the items in the order listed in your packet, and I provided an updated version of that. Hopefully you have those set in front of you this morning. The first thing I'd like to talk about is a COVID duty pay. With the toleration of COVID-19 and the need for job performance to continue at a high level, there's an opportunity to assign COVID pay to those individuals that qualify. This is one of the items adjusted based on the input from Commissioners. The amount proposed is a one-time $1,500 payment for full-time employees in a hazardous environment, a one-time $750 payment for part-time employees that work in a hazardous environment, and $500 for all others, because the consensus was that all employees should be considered for this incentive, and I agree. However, I do believe there should be a distinction between those who are required to operate in a truly hazardous environment versus those who nevertheless important to the mission of the city, have an opportunity to mitigate some of those hazards. The next one is the vaccination.
Mayor? It looks like there's seven different, can we just go around the table every time we do an item?
Absolutely. If we want to stop at the COVID duty pay, and we can address, I think Mr. Brown is on also, we can try to address any issues that you, or questions that you may have.
Okay, good news. Mr. Brown, you with us? Mr. Brown with us?
Steve on the call, he looks like he's still muted. But please go ahead.
Okay, can, I guess somebody text Mr. Brown, tell him he needs to push that button? Commissioner Howard, any questions on this first item? Is this, we're calling COVID duty pay? Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Carter, let me ask you a question. When we met Friday, when we met Friday afternoon at 2:00 PM, it was the consensus of the three of us that was there, did we say that there would be a one-time pay amount of $1,000 and for others, it would probably be like $500?
That was a discussion that was in that group that you had. Subsequent discussions, we've modified based on kind of the consensus of the entire group.
Okay, so that was my concern, so we decided to go with $1,500 rather than $500, rather than $1,000?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I'm concerned, because I thought we was the last group and it was among us three with the mayor and Bob Langstaff, that we agreed that the $1,000 and compared to the other one would be a $500. Mayor, was that your...
You were the last group to meet, however, again, based on the consensus of the whole group, this is what we brought.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Well, you know, I'm just gonna say this, you know, first of all, if anybody works in any conditions that's hazardous, they need to be rewarded, not just one time, every time. And then we're gonna get into what's hazardous and what's not. But we're looking at this, and I'm just gonna tell you really what the public, that is our constituents, that pays everybody's bills out here. This is a little bit of what I've been hearing. You know, we're constantly talking about trying to get our officers pay right, we're constantly trying to make sure that all of our department heads and all a little over 1,000 employees get paid what they should get paid for the work that they do. We haven't even gotten that yet, we've not completed any of that. We're still in talks, you know, about the officers, the fire department, and other departments, you know, and then we're constantly, you know, every time we do run across any type of funds, we all understand the importance of the CSO projects, and we get beat up constantly because we're trying to beat that deadline of 2025. And now, you know, the people are saying, you know, this is, with all due respect, you know, I live a world where so many people for the last 18 months have not received a paycheck, or their businesses have failed, and they didn't have the luxury of working for the government, which continued to work and receive pay and benefits during these 16, 18 months of COVID. And this is just a little difficult for me to swallow that we are paying people to basically stay on their job when I know tons of people that would probably die to have a job. I respect our employees, I know that I'm probably heaven knows, blow up the squat box, send my phone, and let me get gussed out, but I'm just telling it like it is. There is, you know, I don't really want to make a move on anything till we continue the talks on our officers and on our department heads and what we've been talking about. This has sort of come up at the end, and I'm glad, Mayor, that you said let's do line by line, because there is some things that we're gonna talk about today that I do agree on, but looking at a payment to keep them to perform their job, I just don't really know how the constituents are going to handle that. Thank, and you know, that'll be, we're looking at almost, we're pushing the doors of almost a $300 million budget now. And I just, you know, I have to say my piece on this, and I'm gonna respect where this goes. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Warburton?
Thank you, ma'am, for your comment.
Yeah, Mr. Carter, so I guess as a city, this will be the first time we've entertained hazard COVID pay since COVID started last spring.
That is correct.
Okay, we've done no, yeah, so, you know, one of the things that I think about the city government, a large part of our organization, even I do understand Commissioner Fletcher, what she's saying, because even in my own business, you know, I've had to do things different, you know, and, but from a city government standpoint, a lot of our employees didn't have the choice. I mean, when we called 911, whether COVID was at its peak or at its lowest, you know, as citizens, we expected an officer to show up. You know, my garbage was picked up every Tuesday in the height of COVID and then the lowest of COVID. You know, so there's a part of our organization that continued to work, that continued to show up, that continued to come. In the private world, you know, it did hurt our pocketbooks to, we could delay things and not do certain things, and there were consequences, but in city government, those services continued, had to be provided, you know, that's one of our responsibilities as city government. One question I did with Commissioner Howard, I guess Commissioner Young and I, we were the first group, so I guess we weren't privy to, I guess, the discussions with the three that were the last group, but I guess, what was Commissioner Howard referring to as a, because one of the issues I have is, where do you draw the line to say an employee experienced more COVID risk than another employee? And I know it is maybe interaction with public, maybe it's interaction with a certain kind of work, but if you just look really at COVID, and I guess what Mr. Howard was insinuating was, I guess there was a proposal to do an across-the-board, where there is no determinant, it was just a flat-out all-employee type COVID pay, is that what the idea on the table was? Or it was an amount of...
Yes, sir, I think that is exactly what they referred to, and also they referred to the maximum payment of $1,000 and $500 for part-time. So originally, we did, you started out with a monthly stipend for six months, or based on the COVID local numbers, we decided that was kind of an administrative nightmare to try to put that in place. There was proposals to go with a one-time payment, and yes, this is the only time that we have considered a payment to our employees throughout the whole COVID pandemic event. But yes, they proposed a $1,000 max, and across-the-board. Now, I'm proposing that it's not across-the-board, and absolutely, you guys, I'm looking for your input on this, but to say everybody, although everybody in the city is important and we all had to, you know, fight through some things and do what was required, I think there are some of us who, and it is not based on how many times you're exposed to the possibility of being infected with COVID, but just the environment that they work in is a lot different than the other environment. And I personally feel that it is better to compensate those that truly work in a hazardous environment every day, deal with our public, don't have a choice in the matter, a little bit different than we handle the typical office worker.
Right, so we did have work-from-home arrangements and other things for some employees during those times. Other job duties, that wasn't possible, because their job duty was to go respond to a fire or EMS or, you know, there's no working from home with those kind of duties. One thing we did talk about in our group was, you were gonna draft out maybe a paragraph to describe, is that something you can forward to us after the meeting of, you know, what is the, what is the line in the sand, I guess we're drawing, if we do the, as it's proposed, is how would an employee, or how would we determine who's on this side and who's on that side from the COVID risk? And I think you were gonna draft something or write something up in regards to that.
Yes, sir, we do have that, and I share that with you, but pretty much the line in the sand is what we're calling our front-facing individuals, those who actually have to go out and deal with our public versus those who have an office or a way to mitigate interaction with public. So that's pretty much gonna be the line in the sand.
Okay. All right, that's it, Mayor.
Commissioner Young?
Yes, sir. So, I guess, so are we still at the same proposal that, as Commissioner Warburton said, that we discussed, where we were using the hazard pay policy from the HR manual with those 630 some employees?
Yes, sir, and that's basically, I'm sorry, yes, sir, that's basically the statement that I put together, it pulls from that hazard policy statement.
Okay. All right, so nothing, it was again, it was 600 and, I think it was 634 employees?
627, I think, was the initial number that we came up with, and then 30, I think, was part-time. So that's the basis of the number. Now, we'll do some more looking at this, you know, when we actually get down to start trying to cut a check issued this past, you know, we'll scrutinize that number quite diligently to make sure we have what we're supposed to have in that, whether it's a little bit more, a little bit less, we'll make sure that the number is accurate.
Okay, and then, did I hear that the payment amount had changed, or are we still at the $1,500 payment?
There was a suggestion to afford the change, but what I presented to you was not a change. What's being presented to you today is still 1,500.
Okay. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
My impact, my concern was the impact this has on the budget. Obviously, Commissioner Fletcher's point is well-taken.
Yes, sir.
But I also know that once other local governments start providing incentives to employees, that our employees are gonna be somewhat disgruntled if they don't receive the compensation. We all know that this has been a difficult and stressful time. I agree with the distinction between those employees who are placed at personal peril on a regular basis. Obviously, we know police officers coming into contact with the public, some people who are tellers having interaction and actually got sick, and, but then we're gonna have the issue of, how do you define, what's the delineation here? And I'm just gonna have to leave that to staff, but obviously, we talked about it, what about people in recreation, the gyms and centers were closed for three months, and then they were opened up. Are they gonna be, clearly, I would think, people that work in human resources and finance would not be in the definition of what is a hazardous position, but I think we'll just have to leave that to staff, and like I say, if we could, Mr. Carter, before we vote on this, could we get the raw, well, the actual numbers of what this, what you call COVID bonus pay would be?
Yes, sir. We know from the previous look at it, 627 was the initial one that would qualify for the $1,500 range, 30 was the ones that would qualify for the $500 range, and whatever the remaining employees would qualify for the $500 range. But we'll get that remaining number for you, because again, you know, as we actually get ready to implement this, we'll scrutinize this very well and provide, you know, accurate, down-to-the-penny number for you.
Okay, before we approve this, though, I mean, before, I would vote on it, I would have to know how many employees are in each category, and also I'd like to see what the numbers would be if the one-time payment for full-time employees was 1,000, and 500 for part-time employees and 500 for other employees. So, A and a B. Is that sufficient?
Okay, during the week, between now and the actual regular meeting, we'll provide those numbers to you.
Okay, well, now, if we need to put this off for a month, I would rather do that than us spend $2 million and not understand what we're doing. But, Mr. Brown, do you have anything to add with that, to that?
No, not at this time, I'm here for any questions you all may have.
Okay. Any questions on that item for Mr. Brown? Anybody?
I have no question, for Mr. Brown.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Well, just a comment on what you said, if this is going to happen, I would like to know who, not just the number, I'd like to know who, because I'm sure we're gonna get out here and be faced with, why didn't you call us hazardous? So if we could get a list of people that you put in that category, I think it's gonna help in the long run. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Warburton? Any question, Mr. Brown?
No question.
Commissioner Young?
Well, you know, getting to this, getting back to this question of, I guess, you know, where are we talking about? Who's gonna get it versus who's not gonna get it? You know, the hazard...
You know, the hazard policy that was provided by interim city manager was pretty clear. Now, I know that's not going, you know, make some folks feel happy who don't qualify, but I would just say, I mean, this is, you know, I guess, at the end of the day, I know we're not, it's not going to stop us from getting calls or comments, but it's a decision that he is making and a decision that he's leaning on that particular policy to guide this decision. And, you know, I think, you know, we need to kind of, you know, stay out of the politics, keep it out of the politics realm, because we know when we get the job, we sign off on that HR policy, and that's what guides a lot of the decisions that get made in terms of personnel decisions like this. So let's make sure we're looking at the policy and being guided by that.
Yes, with me, Mr. Carter, just for clarification, it's not my concern about the individuals. My concern is how many people we're talking about, and obviously, if we could sort of get an update on what the definitions that we utilized are, so we can discuss it intelligently when somebody feels like their friend was improperly classified, you know?
Hello, Mr. Herr, and we'll definitely get that to you. We'll get the numbers to you. But I will state that, you know, what I would prefer, and going along with what Commissioner Young has stated, we do have a policy that we drafted for this. The policy will handle how we delineate employees, and I will take on that responsibility of determining, of making that final determination of who qualifies, who don't qualify. And I'll be able to stand whatever scrutiny that you guys provide as a result of that determination.
Well, I think a concern I have not is just resolving the issue with you, Mr. Carter, but saying that our city manager made this decision, and these were the criteria, so that we can, you know, with the general public, because I, so with that, let's go to the second item, and that is an incentive, vaccination incentive.
If you hold on just a moment, I think Mr. Davis, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Brown, has kind of pulled the preliminary numbers together for you, and he likes to provide that on the COVID pay.
Yes, Mayor, to answer that question, for this first category, from a pure dollar amount, the total amount is $1,251,516. And so based on that updated agenda item Mr. Carter sent this morning, the $1,500 payment would apply to 626 people. The $750 payment for the part-time people in the hazardous environment would be 30 people, and the remaining employees that would get the $500 incentive would be 341 employees, or a total of 997 employees.
Okay. And can you get those numbers with 1,000 for the 626 and 500 for the remaining 371?
Okay, you want to get, you want to see what the numbers are? Okay, 1,000 for the 626, and then the remainder, 371, $500, correct?
Yes. Okay. All right. Mr. Carter, now, moving on to the incentive pay, and we'll get back to Mr. Brown if we can do that way.
All right, we can do that.
Okay.
The next item is the vaccination incentive pay. You know, as we've approached this, we are pretty much the last entity in the city to bring this forward, to encourage the entire workforce to get vaccinated. A one-time incentive is being awarded to fully vaccinated employees. The proposed amount is $300 for all eligible employees. The incentive is retroactive for those employees that have previously been vaccinated ahead of the incentive announcement. We've added a couple of restrictions. One is that the window of opportunity ends on November 15, 2021, at 5:00 p.m. The other is that the individual must show proof of being fully vaccinated based on whichever vaccine chosen. Again, $300 is the amount that we are asking. The county has also offered, already implemented a $300 incentive. I think the school system has, they've actually offered a $1,000 incentive. So we're asking this board to approve a $300 incentive. I pause right now for any questions on that particular item.
Commissioner Howard, any questions?
No question.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
Well, I do want to ask you, Mr. Carter, you know, a lot of times we get funds, and if we don't use them, we lose it. So is the CARES Act money that you say that this is where all of these funds are coming from, is that the case? You know, I mean, we've got, I know that we use some CARES Act money for the CSO project, so we still have more money out there that is designated for CARES Act only?
And don't confuse this with the American Rescue money. The CARES Act money that we're referring to in this particular budget adjustment is reimbursed money that we spent on COVID expenses during our last fiscal year. There are certain things that we were able to submit because we incurred that expense that the fans would reimburse us for, and this is just money, this is money that we've already spent, that we've been reimbursed for, that we didn't think we were going to get this particular, this quickly, but we did. So now we have that money in hand. It's not, it's not use or lose money, because we've already incurred the expense. This is just reimbursement for that expense.
So that's what I'm asking. You've used, sometime last year, we used funds, because I remember Ms. Wright really submitting tons and tons of paperwork, and she kept up with how much we're getting back. So this is money that, I mean, we've already used the money, but we sort of got reimbursed, not expecting that, so it's extra monies in your eyes, correct? I mean, I know the American, I mean...
Kind of extra, but it's not really extra, because we've already incurred the expense, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Well, extra was probably the wrong word, but it was money that come back our way. It was still the taxpayers' money, but it's money that come back our way, and we got, we spent it not really knowing that we would ever get reimbursed for it. Is that best...
Yes, ma'am. We're cautiously optimistic that we would, and we did, so we, you know...
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Warburton?
Yeah, Ms. Carter, so I remember when the county was deliberating this, I don't know, a month or two ago, one of the statements that was made, well, let me back up. I guess there's two parts to a vac, one is just, you know, if you believe in vaccination, you know, if you care for your loved ones and your family, you know, if you're on that train of thought, you know, you're encouraging vaccination just because you want to, you know, you care for people and you don't, you know, that if you believe that's going to help them. There's another side that the county talked about, and that's purely financial, that I guess this line item may cost $150,000, $200,000 total. I know Mr. Brown gave us a number. But if vaccinations keeps one or two people from going into significant health issues from a city standpoint, that's, you know, again, I hate to look at healthcare from a return on investment, but just from a return on investment, statistics will tell us that if a person is vaccinated, their healthcare cost will be substantially less. So, and I can't remember the numbers the county shared, I think Mr. McCoy, but that may help with this line item if there's some financial, if you take the softer element out, and you're just purely looking at from the investment we're going to make for vaccinations and how that plays out just in terms of healthcare costs. I think the county made a play that it significantly can help reduce the amount of healthcare cost and healthcare issues just by simply getting vaccinated.
Yes, sir. We can definitely look at, well, we're actually looking at it on two fronts. One is, yes, that's just the right thing to do to help protect not just your families, but your coworkers around you, but also, don't forget, we have had deaths in our employee base related to COVID, and we have had hospitalizations related to COVID. You know, so if we can do something to help avoid those costs and keep those employees healthy and around, then absolutely, we want to do all we can to incentivize that group to move forward.
Okay. So I don't know if you could get some of those rough numbers, maybe, you know, COVID, additional COVID healthcare costs we've had as a city in the last, you know, 12 months or, but it seemed like the county had some kind of, and I know it would be just kind of a rough approximate number, but that would be kind of a good number just to have if you had some approximate numbers.
Yes, sir. We can work with our HR staff to find out what, you know, what our COVID-related healthcare cost has been, as well as maybe do some projections as to what it may be in the future. However, again, we've had significant loss because of COVID, so we're advocating for this on both of those fronts.
Ms. Young?
Thank you.
No questions.
Follow-up on what Commissioner Warburton was saying. If we just had the hospital bills, the total bills for the city employees who required mechanical ventilation, I mean, I know those numbers would be significant, but I, you know, there again, might be some HIPAA issues. I don't know if we can get the bills, but if we didn't have the person's name, but could we look into that, Mrs. Davis?
I think we already have it, don't we?
Okay. Well, I mean, that's just, I mean, that's something that, I think it'd really be pretty out, and if we saw what, and we've, besides the employees who have passed away, I think we've had a few folks come off ventilation, so...
Okay. I'll check with HR, but I would think we have a record of those expenses.
All right. Good news.
Yes, sir. I think we had those numbers. We just have the scrub of any personal information that we provide, but otherwise, I think we're able to present what you're asking for, hopefully, and thank you, Mr. Warburton.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Carter. I would think that if you're talking about eight or nine people, that wouldn't be a privacy issue. If you had two people who had passed away, you know, that might be a concern. Okay. Number three is...
I don't think they'll be releasing any names. They might just give you the numbers.
No, no, no. What I would say, Mr. Davis, if it was only one person that passed away, you wouldn't really need the name and social security number, you know? You've got to figure out who, okay, but the next item is the incentive to obtain college education. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir. This item is an education incentive for employees showing the initiative to continue their education. A one-time incentive is being offered upon completion of an associate's, a bachelor's, or a master's degree. The proposed amount is $500 for an associate, 1,000 for a master's, I'm sorry, for a bachelor's, and 1,500 for a master's, respectively. Individuals that have obtained these, have obtained these degrees since July 1, 2016, and we had to establish some limit on where we're going to go back to grandfather those in, we will be compensated for those degrees if they complete those degrees within that Again, this is a one-time stipend for achieving that degree, and the other requirement is that the degree has to be something that the city, the city uses, can't just be something arbitrary that doesn't fall in the purview of a job defined by the city. Specifically for the education incentive we're talking about here, it has to be a degree that is used in the field that the person is working in.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Howard?
No further questions.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Commissioner Warburton?
No questions.
Ms. Young?
No questions.
Okay. Mr. Carter, the next is basically rewarding employees who have certain certificates, and you could explain that to us? I mean, at the retreat, Mr. Stock was, had notified us that, of course, certain individuals in the utility department are required to maintain certifications, and it's necessary for the city, for those individuals to be properly certified, and they are not compensated for obtaining the certification that essentially the city requires to operate.
Yes, sir. There are several certifications across the city that we would prefer our workforce to have. There are certain certifications across the city that we require our workforce to have. There are certain certifications across the city that other governing agencies require that the city has someone in their employee staff that maintains that certification. What we're trying to do now is incentivize our employees to attain those certifications, therefore making sure we have a succession plan as a lot of the older certificate-holding employees are preparing to retire and remove themselves from the workforce. For assignments that require the acquisition and retention of certain certifications, an incentive is being offered with a maximum amount for any certification set at $750. Individuals that have obtained certifications since 1 July 2016, again, we're trying to use a standard date as far as looking back and making sure we compensate accordingly. We'll be grandfathered in and receiving maximum, maximum of a 1.5 times the value of the highest certification if multiple certifications have been achieved. Again, as you stated, we have certain positions in our city where a certified worker is required. We have a lot of positions in our city where certifications are desired, and we're trying to incentivize those groups to obtain those certifications, and again, maintain the highest standard with our workforce. Any questions that you guys may have, we'll talk about it this time.
Commissioner Howard?
No question.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Ms. Fletcher?
No questions.
Commissioner Warburton?
Not necessarily a question, but just a comment. I mean, in the employee world, you know, when an employee takes the initiative to go get a higher-level college degree, or they pursue a certification to make them a subject-manner expert, I just think that these type of incentives, just, it shows the employee, whether it's a small amount or a large amount, that those are important, and I think both of these are good for employees. It shows rewarding for their initiative, rewarding for, again, being an expert in whatever field they work in, you know, going after multiple certifications or a college degree. So I think both of these, in my opinion, definitely rewards the kind of employees that we want to continue to keep by giving them a bonus for achieving those items. So, that's it, Mayor.
Ms. Young?
Yes, sir. Once again, my worry is, a lot of times when we, I guess, do these incentives that, you know, we may provide some training that is going to allow our workers to be poached, is there any, any type of way we can ensure some, I guess, obligation after, you know, they receive these education credits or education incentives that they, you know, stay on with us, or how can we avoid that situation where we've invested, you know, invested, you know, a significant amount of these education incentives, and they may leave us?
The audio on that was kind of broken up, but I think what you're asking is, is there some way to, as we provide these incentives for education and certifications, is there some way to kind of make sure we retain that talent in our employee pool for a certain amount of time?
Yes, sir. That's the question.
Okay. Of course, we can't make any guarantees, but we can certainly work to set some standards for, you know, once you receive these certifications, or once you receive these education benefits, that you provide some type of return to the city as far as longevity is concerned, maybe. But again, you know, as we, as we look to wrap a lot of these things around that employee, such as the things we're talking about today, such as the other incentives that's already been put in place, such as some of the ones that we're looking still to enact, I think all of these things together will prove to that employee that the city of Albany is a valuable place to work, and that in itself also will bring a substantial value to being a city employee. a city employee, which will delay some of that attrition that we've been seeing, and improve our ability to not just recruit, but to retain the talent that we have on board.
One thing I would like, Mr. Carter, if we could get a list of the different positions, and I mean, I know you said with the education degree, it would have to benefit the city. I assume if somebody had a degree in anthropology, they're not going to get the $1,500. But likewise, a fellow last night was talking about he had a certificate to do a control burn. I don't, you know, I don't think that would assist the city. Maybe it would, but I mean, I think it would, I think it would just be good business to have a written list of the certifications that are, that would be eligible for this payment.
I'd go one even better for you, sir. What we're looking at doing is making sure that we rewrite our job descriptions, so that the job description itself will talk about the degree and the certification required for that specific job description. Therefore, it becomes pretty easy to say, your certification or your degree don't apply, because if it's not listed in the job description, then it don't apply.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Number five, is this a, certain positions, public safety, utility, operations? Are we talking about a payment to people in public safety and certain utility employees for longevity pay?
Sir, I'm sorry, but you're breaking up. I couldn't hear exactly what you asked.
I'm on the wrong item.
The first one is direct pay increase, that what we're talking about now for public safety and for certain utility positions.
Okay.
All right. There are certain positions within the organization such as our police department, our fire department, and utility operations that have proven to be difficult to recruit and to maintain. We heard in the presentation at the retreat, certain items or certain positions are, as I think Commissioner Young alluded to, are being poached from our workforce. An adjustment to some of these salaries will assist in this endeavor. What we're trying to do for this particular item, we've gotten a, excuse me, a pay study back from the fire department. I shared with most of you what the vendor has said that, you know, how we fall as far as our minimum mid and maximum pay for certain grades are considered. What I'd like to do, and we looked at what we can do and what we can't afford to do, because now this, this particular pay, unlike the others we've talked about thus far, this is actually a pay increase, which has long lasting effects on the budget and the, actually for the life of that employee. We looked at a 3% increase, we looked at a 2.5% increase, and we looked at a 2% increase. And based on what we think we can sustain, we're asking that for the police and for the fire, we're looking at a 2% increase above what we've already allocated for certain of those positions and for some of those utility operations. Because of where we are, and I think this is approximately 300 employees that are going to be affected by this direct pay increase, again, it's based on, we looked at what the pay study indicated, is the, we don't have, let me say it this way also, when we looked at that pay study, we only had a few people that was anywhere near the minimum. And I think if we do what we're asking you guys to do on this 2% increase, we'll have almost 50% of our, I'm sorry, this is the fire department that we did the pay study on, we'll have at least 50, almost 50% of them will be at or above that midpoint. So I think along with our police department, and our fire department, and our utility operations, this movement itself will help work through some of those obstacles that we've been having trying to retain our talented workers.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Howard?
Any questions?
No question.
Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Mr. Fletcher?
Well, I do, Mr. Carter, agree with getting everybody's pay right and really just getting it where it needs to be. But I will, and you might have included this in this, I'm just, I could be looking at it wrong, but, you know, I saw very much during Hurricane Michael, the importance of public works and how it was really frontline. So I'm hoping that when we look at all of this, you know, that we take in consideration. You know, I believe that department's short, and I think they're having difficulty recruiting. So if we're going to do it, I hope that we just do it straight across the board with all of the people that we consider a little difficult to get the positions filled. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Warburton?
So I guess if you take the emotions out of this line item, you know, we hear all the stuff on social media of pay and police and salt, you know, and all the back and forth about defund this and whatever. But if you purely look at it from, if you take a teacher, for instance, there's a shortage in the teacher world of STEM, you know, so there's incentives to try to get teachers to go into STEM. If you look in the medical community, it's nursing, and that's where all of the focus is going, because they're short of nurses. And Phoebe will tell you, they would hire 200, you know, and so they, in the city government world, you hear across the nation, across our state, it's public safety. And this is simply a response that we've got to continue to be competitive in the world of pay for this segment of our city government. Just last night, I'll share a personal story, had a need to call the police, had a theft in one of my properties. It took an hour and a half for an officer to get there. So as you sit there, you know, you can get frustrated, but as I interacted with the police, you find out that how many people were working, you find out all the calls, there was a car theft and a truck theft and this, and you're like, oh, well, I don't feel so bad waiting an hour and a half because of what this officer just had to do in the hour and a half that I was sitting in my car waiting, all the stuff that they were dealing with. And it's like, wow, if they had two or three more officers, then I wouldn't have had to wait for an hour and a half for my less of an emergency type of phone call. But it just, again, last night, that just reiterated to me that that is an area that we need to continue to make improvements and have less reasons for our officers to leave. And at the end of the day, sometimes it's the pay that does that. And so I think, Mr. Carter, so you're saying the 2%, I mean, that's going to certainly get us to a point, and that's across the board. But I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, we're going to need to continue to make work in next year's budget to continue to get these, this group of employees to a point. And I think this is a, I don't want to say a baby step, but it's certainly a step in the right direction for this group. And so, anyway, so that, I guess I didn't really have a question, just kind of wanted to share my thoughts and even what I experienced and just what I was in my own head of what happened even with me last night. So, anyway, that's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Chris Young?
Yes, sir. I don't really necessarily have any questions or anything to add, but just to reiterate some of the points that I made in the retreat, is that I think we have an opportunity here in all of our positions. If we're going to start doing pay incentives and education incentives, it seems like it's intuitive to recognize that there are some, going to be some good positions within our city government to have. And I believe in the adage, if you give somebody a good job to do, they'll do a good job. So, you know, I want us to really look at, and I'm not just making platitudes, but I really want us to look at trying to create a career pathway to the jobs that we desperately need for our city, but create that career pathway for our youth. A lot of kids are graduating, we know, without a clear pathway to a job, without a clear pathway to a career that might be right here in their hometown, as long as we can recreate that pipeline for them to go through the educational requirements and come on with the city with a decent job that can give them a good life right here in Albany. We always talk about our young people leaving Albany for better opportunities. We have to make sure we, as a city, are creating those same opportunities here where we can kind of control that. The example of the linemen that we talked about, we do know the linemen are leaving town for better paying jobs, but, you know, I guarantee you, we have some young people who are in our community that would jump at the chance of making, you know, $28 an hour, $30 an hour, you know, while they may be able to make some more elsewhere, but, you know, starting out, that would be something great for those young, young individuals here, as well as with the police department. You know, we're talking about making $35,000 to $40,000 a year as a starting pay for a police officer. That would be good for a young person who may be considering something like going into the military or may not be going to a four-year institution. Maybe they could do two years at the tech, at Albany Tech, and get a, by the time they're 20 or 21, whenever the eligible age to have a post-certification, they will have that pathway to a career in law enforcement, much as the young people who go into the ROTC go into a pathway with the military. So, again, I just want to, you know, make sure we're looking at all these opportunities to better our community, better our citizens with those pathways to a career. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Howard, I mean, Commissioner Howard has suggested, and I tend to concur, we just go through this list, but as of next Tuesday, Commissioner Howard was saying, why don't we just vote on the COVID pay and the vaccine incentive? This is a lot of information, and we're talking about a lot of, I mean, a substantial amendment to the budget. I know staff would rather just amend the budget one time, but, I mean, I think it might be prudent. And I would add item seven on there to vote on next Tuesday night. But obviously, we need to go ahead and go through and discuss these remaining items, but, well, is that correct, Ms. Howard?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor. And the reason why I say so is that we are still in this pandemic, and I think that, I know we will have quite a few still disgruntled employees, but since this pandemic is continuing, and seeming to be, we're going into next year, that I will feel much comfortable and I can be able to justify that these other bullet points is something that we know that some is going to continue, we're going to make some budget adjustment or if we continuation. We take the most simplest one, we all, and I want to paraphrase that, take the COVID pay and the $300 vaccination to all employees, and then we come back because I want to make sure what we do with the education, with the police certificates and things of that nature, that we be in the ballpark of competitive. But I think that what we discussed last week at the retreat and this week and today, I will feel much comfortable just going and do the pay for COVID environment, and we come back and juggle the numbers to make sure that we are on the, in the ballpark with these other bullet points.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Carter, now we're going to the longevity pay?
Yes, sir. Longevity pay is a proposed, this is, again, just kind of like the direct pay increase, because it's going to have a lasting effect on that employee for the life of that employee. But what we're asking for is for every five years of service, there is a one-step increase on the pay scale. I've had several employees give me the example of there's no way to move along the pay scale. You may be hired at a certain level, and at some point, you know, in the future, you find yourself still at that same level. You know, you may have gotten a cost of living increase at some point or something else, but there was no way to actually move from step one, step two, or step three. This will give employees the opportunity to kind of move along that pay scale as long as they have, you know, meritorious service throughout that five-year period. So as long as, you know, we want to incentivize our employees to be really high achievers. We absolutely need those, but we need people that come to work every day, do their job, and they're not really trying to be that first-tier high achiever that everybody expects to have on their team. We need people that come work, show up every day, do their job, and move things along, move projects along, do the job that they've been hired to do. And this will give those people, as well as everybody, an opportunity to move along that pay scale and not become stagnated in one spot. I think this is something that had been done in the past, and for some reason it was discontinued, but I do think this, of all the things that we're talking about, this is probably one, and along with the direct pay increase, those two are probably the ones that I think would have the most significant impact on being able to recruit and retain the talent that we have inside the city. Any questions about that?
Ms. Howard? Mayor Protem?
No questions.
Mr. Fletcher?
No, I like that. No questions, just that comment. Thank you.
Commissioner Warburton?
Yeah, Mr. Carter, a step increase, is that about 2%? I mean, what is the roundabout? Is it a linear progression, or is it, I mean, I guess, what are we talking about in terms of, what is a typical kind of increase? Is a step increase?
Between 5 and 7%. Just depends on where you're on the pay scale. So these are significant. They're not insignificant increases.
So a step increase generally is between 5 and 7%?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. That's it, Mayor. Thanks.
Mr. Young?
Yes, sir. And I'll just, you know, tell the public what I told the city manager is that I did have a conversation with one of our city employees, and she lamented the fact that they had stopped the step increases. And, you know, it does, you know, kind of lead to a situation where people don't feel valued. She said she had been at the city of Albany eight years, and, you know, she was still at the same pay, and people were coming on who haven't had those eight years in and making the same pay that she was making. So I believe those step raises should and do have a benefit toward making people, you know, stay on and feeling like they have, they are valued in the job capacity that they're serving. So I do support those step increases coming back.
All right. Is that all, Commissioner Young?
Yes.
My question, Mr. Carter, and like I said, I don't think we went over this the other day, but now, this would begin effective July of 2021. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Let's say hypothetically, we had somebody that's been in the HR department for 16 years. That person wouldn't receive the benefit of a three-step increase, would he or she?
No, sir. They would receive one step if their anniversary date is on or after July 1.
Okay. See, this is what I thought might be an issue, that you got long-term employees, and they said, well, we were denied this step increase, and then we're going to come back and say, well, we're going to reinstate the step increase, and you're really talking about a lot of money then.
Yes, sir. We cannot afford to be retroactive for everybody that may have had an anniversary date, you know, since the beginning of their employee, I mean, their employment. We, we have a city, we just cannot afford that.
Well, you know, the old saying, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. I mean, if- mean, if we got this hypothetical employee, and so you're saying their five-year, I mean, if they've been here sixteen years, their next five-year increase would be at twenty years, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there again, this employee might be upset when a coworker who's been here nine and a half years gets the benefit of a one-step raise, and I mean, it's just, you know, you kind of, I mean, I just see all kind of problems that could be created by this, and I think we just need to look at it a lot, lot closer. I do think-
Oh, sir?
Sir?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I mean, I just-
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Those are, I mean, I think some of these things, we need to vet a lot more fully, but with that, let's just go to the last item, the budget amendment for the thirty-five thousand dollars for the master plan for the Civil Rights Institute.
Right, sir, you skipped the contingency that I asked, because, you know, we've worked on these numbers for the last several weeks-
Yes, sir.
But we know that after we implement this, it's probably, those numbers are probably going to move a little bit, and we want to make sure that we had some wiggle room in those numbers so that we're able to allocate, or to sufficiently allocate the money required. But back to the longevity pay for just a moment, again, we can't afford to go back to the beginning of the time with this, and any date you set, there are going to be winners and losers with that. And I think if we articulate this to our employees, that hey, this is a reward going forward, not going back, I think everybody could understand, you know, if we are upfront and truthful with them to start with, don't set unrealistic expectations when we're going into these things. I think we'll be able to handle a lot of the uproar that you may anticipate to happen. I think there won't be disgruntled employees, I may be one of them, but that's just, that's just the luck of the draw. There's going to be winners and losers in each one of these categories, because there's going to be something that somebody thinks they should be qualified for, that they, at the end of the day, just don't qualify for. So unfortunately, anytime we're trying to enact anything new, and I've explained this to the group, that as we're looking at these, there are going to be winners and losers in each one of these categories.
Okay. Well, not to belabor, but I mean, there's, I mean, it just comes to my mind some scenarios that would be unfair. Go back to my employee that's been with the city for eighteen years, and has a coworker that's been here four years and nine months. So three years after this policy's implemented, the coworker gets a one-step increase, and that employee's saying, well, I've been here thirteen years more than coworker, and he or she got an increase, why didn't I get an increase? I mean, it's, you know, I'm not-
Right, and simply because the rule says it starts on this date, and you didn't qualify. Unfortunately, that's the rule, and as you qualify, we're absolutely make sure that, you know, that you're rewarded accordingly.
Okay.
I mean, that's a hard answer.
And the other thing, the other thing, Mr. Carter, this eighteen-year employee is going to say, well, I've been denied two steps at five and ten, and I have to get to thirty before I, I mean, I have to get to twenty before I get a increase, and I might retire at twenty. It's, I mean, I-
I understand, and that's a valid argument.
Yes, sir.
But the answer remains the same. Hey, I feel for you, I understand your plight, but the rule is the rule, and the only way we can implement this is with some kind of guardrails about how we implement it.
Yes, sir.
Again, I think if we've planned this, buddy, they understand.
I appreciate your efforts. I mean, we're doing what we can do to retain employees, but like I say, I just, I just feel like we need to think this thing through and work it through and know what the consequences and ramifications are going to be.
Well, I was just going to add a comment that, you know, that, the previous, you know, steps, you know, we're trying to provide, you know, incentives now. If it didn't get done before us, that's not necessarily on us, it's not on the city manager. He's trying to provide that step now and reinstitute that. So I think, you know, we need to give our, you know, our employees a little bit more credit to understand that we're trying to do something that says we value them, and they understand that. And I know some of, everybody's not going, you know, be happy, but you know, we're re-instituting this, this is something that moves us forward, so I think we just need to look at it that way, you know, instead of just kind of anticipating the blowback, you know, on each thing, because if we say, okay, we don't want to do it because somebody's going to get mad, and we don't do anything, you know, we have to do something, you know, and I think this is a step in the right direction. No pun intended, but if we're starting here, this is the starting point. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Young, but I'm saying we need to fully understand what the consequences of the plan's going to be. So with that, we can go now to the last item. Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir, that is, during the retreat, there was a consensus to seek assistance with a master plan for the Civil Rights Institute. The estimated cost of that is thirty-five thousand dollars, and I'll actually turn it over to the mayor to have first comments on that particular item.
Well, as we talked about at the retreat, the, there's that RFP out, and for a revision, a master plan to look at the proposals for enhancing the exhibitory or either expanding the Civil Rights Institute, and the fee to be paid to the consultants, thirty-five thousand dollars, and this would provide the funding to ACRI to commission the master plan. Any questions or comments, Commissioner Howard?
No comment.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, just to confirm, did you say we put out an RFP for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and we just had one that gave us a bid?
No, no, I mean, no, the RFP says that's going to be the fee.
Oh, I see, so the RFP states this is the fee that will be paid for this, and we have that out now?
Right.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, no questions.
Ms. Warburton?
Yeah, the only question is, how is this going to be administered? Is the successful consultant going to be working for the city? Are we reimbursing civil rights for, like-
It's just an allocation, we have to get something, some agreement with the Civil Rights Institute, but they're going to manage, they're going to select the consultant and manage the project.
So that's the only concern I have, is not whether it's needed or not, it is needed, but to use taxpayer dollars, there needs to be some accountability to us, whether the, our purchasing department contracts with them. Of course, they'd be working with the group, but you know-
I think-
There's got to be some amount of, if it's taxpayer dollars, that there's some service that's provided for that amount of money. I would think that it ought to be, I mean, Mr. Carter, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like the city ought to, I guess, use a vendor that's approved and pay them directly, and of course, we can assign them to go, you know, consult with the civil, but at the end of the day, when they deliver the master plan, and we write them a check for thirty-five thousand, I mean, there needs to be some accountability, they completed the work, to the satisfactory of whatever it was they contracted for. You understand what I'm saying? Is that something we can do through our purchasing department, Mr. Carter, or?
Well, it just depends on how this agreement is termed. You know, I have to work with the city attorney naturally to scope something, but however the, you know, I have to fully understand what it is that you're asking us to do, before I can say, yeah, Nate, this is something that the city can take on in its own capacity.
So what you're saying, Commissioner Warburton, is basically the city retains the consultant?
Well, or there's a MOU written with the Civil Rights Institute, so that, you know, they pay for it, and it's a reimbursed type of expense, you know, but there's got to be some paper trail, some service that's delivered, that, you know, we got to avoid any kind of gratuity, potential problem that-
Actually-
Define service or-
The dollars that I guess will be used, the dollars that will be used for this is through the hotel motel tax, and that kind of works through the CDB. So, you know, that kind of puts us one step removed from that, so that may give you some leeway in how you work these agreements.
Okay. There's got to be some kind of precedent, because it's not just civil rights, it might be the River Quarry next time, it might be Chi-Hall next time, it might be another entity, but you know, if there's a need, there's some way of providing and meeting that need with the proper accountability and the proper way.
Okay. We'll get something right. Ms. Young?
Yeah, that was pretty much along the lines of the same question I had, is whether or not we're just allocating them thirty-five thousand dollars for them to find and implement a master plan, or are we going to be providing that? Because you said a RFP had been put out by us or by the Civil Rights Board?
The board.
They've already put out the RFP, and we're just providing them funding.
Right.
Okay, well, that's, okay, that's what I understood. I got confused when we met with the city manager, but if we're just providing them funding, extra allocation, and Mr. Carter, you said that could go through the convention bureau, and that would kind of be where we would hold them accountable to whatever?
Right, we, you know, the motel tax is kind of allocated to them anyway, and we have some face on how it's distributed, but they're the actual agency that deal with it.
Okay, and if it's done that way, you know, then I guess that's a cut and dry way to do it, without to worry about who's responsible for what. It's just another amendment. Instead of them getting their hundred thousand dollars, they'll get an extra thirty-five thousand dollars, I guess is the better way to put it, so they'll get a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar allocation for twenty-one, twenty-two. Is that how?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
Okay, I guess we need to talk about how we're going to go forward, I mean-
Can I add something before you do that, dear?
Yes, sir.
You asked about what it would cost if we changed the allocation from fifty on the COVID duty pay?
Yes, sir.
We change the allocation to one thousand for the six hundred and twenty-six employees and five hundred for everybody else, that total allocation would be eight hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars versus the one point two, that is what we're asking for today. So that would be the difference between those two allocations. You also asked about, not just you, I think Commissioner Warburton asked about what did it look like as far as our COVID expenditures for healthcare? That was presented, Ms. Wright reminded me that that was presented during the healthcare presentation that was done at the last commission meeting. We actually have, based on that count at the time, eight hundred and sixty-one claims, and for a total of one point two million dollars called, incurred based on COVID-19. So the, the one hundred and, I'm sorry, the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation that we're asking for is, would be dropping the buck as far as what our costs have been as far as COVID is concerned. And the last thing I'd like to say is, as you consider which ones of these you want to do now, which ones you want to delay on, I would ask that you don't delay on any. And the reason I would ask that is, the staff has worked on this for quite some time, and we have looked at this from all angles, we have figured out what we anticipate the cost is going to be, we've figured out how we're going to execute. This is not unknown to us, and I think the sooner we do something to make sure that our employees know that we are working hard to support them and move things forward as far as just spending life is concerned, I think the more loyalty that we'll get from that, from those employees. Again, I understand that you may have some questions that you want to ask about some of these, but as far as how we will allocate, how we will execute, how we will delineate, we've looked at all those things, and we're prepared to move forward today.
Okay.
Thank you for your time, thank you for your consideration, thanks for working with us through this past week to get to where we are. If you have any further questions, we'll try to answer those as we close out this particular item.
Okay, let's, we'll go around, everybody make a comment or questions for Mr. Carter. Will everybody have one more chance to speak? Ms. Howard?
I'm concerned by what I stated earlier, and I stick by it.
Okay. Mayor Protem?
Nothing further.
Okay. Commissioner Fletcher?
Well, I do agree that this is a can that needs to be picked up, it just needs to be fair. Thank you.
Ms. Warburton?
Yeah, my proposal, and I guess I think of sometimes our federal representatives in Congress, they're putting together these large omnibus bills, and there's so many parts and pieces that sometimes one item makes somebody vote against the whole thing. And so part of me thinks maybe we should consider this as seven individual items.
It is, yeah.
Because I may have a problem with one thing, and it makes me voting no on everything, but if we go line by line, we might be able to find consensus on most of them, if some of them, kind of like Commissioner Howard mentioned. But I would agree with Mr. Carter, I think we need to take consideration and action on something next week. And so my suggestion would be almost consider this as seven items, you know, the six pay items, you know, and of course, the item for the civil rights is unrelated to all the employee stuff, and that almost should be its own item. So that's just my recommendation, is take all these seven at a time, each one, and then at the end of the day, whatever it ends up being, that's your budget amendment, based on what's approved of the seven.
I can live with that.
Ms. Young?
Nothing further.
Okay. You know, we look on here on the cons, now this is a con, the funding option will need to be developed for continuation. I mean, it's, it's for costs that are not one-time payments, I mean, I really think the responsible thing to do would be to have a calculation, a projection of what this two percent increase, I mean, we're going to have to do it, I mean, I understand that, but what it's going to cost us year after year. And it's not just, these recurring expenses are, it's something I think we need more definitive numbers on before we act. And now, I do agree, it's been pointed out that we've charged staff with giving us some solutions to address the attrition rate we have throughout the organization, but I just think that the easier issues, which would be items one, two, and seven, we could move on to the others, we discuss further until, and have more specific figures as to what the, not only the cost, but the ongoing expense would be. But those are my thoughts. And so, next items for future-
Just to understand, we have the, we can provide you with the ongoing cost, we didn't consider any of these things without considering what it looks like in the future, so we can get you that information to communicate that.
Okay, and we're talking about the ongoing expenses for the next five budget years. We can get that.
Okay.
Okay. Items for future generations- Items for future agenda, Commissioner Howard?
Mayor, can I, can I hit one thing before we go?
Yes, sir.
How did we decide we're gonna move forward on this for the regular meeting next week? I have to have a, you know, some indication of what we're doing, so I know how to move forward.
Okay, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Howard, but I think everybody else is ready to move, is that right?
Do we wanna do them as separate items then?
No, no.
That way everybody get to vote effectively?
I, I think that's the, I think that's the appropriate way to do it, because we've got seven different-
Okay.
I- issues here, but-
Okay.
Is everybody else besides Commissioner Howard and myself ready to go with all these items? Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir, I'm ready to go, and I think we should vote on them individually.
Okay. Commissioner Fletcher?
I agree, individually.
And you're ready, you're ready to go with all of them next Tuesday?
Well, it's not, I mean, I would like to have had more time to look into it, but if everybody's pushing, I'm gonna go with four, but I do want them to go individually.
Okay. Commissioner Warbinton?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, Mr. Carter and staff has made a commitment to get us whatever we're looking for, and I, I think your, your last request for information, that would be something good to have, and Mr. Carter has insinuated that he, or has stated, they didn't insinuate, he stated that he would get what we needed, so, yeah, I'm, I'm for moving forward with all seven.
Commissioner Young?
I'm for moving forward.
Okay, so I guess we'll, we'll go forward with it.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you got the support.
Items for future agenda, Commissioner Howard?
Mr. Mayor, it's Mr., Mr. Norman still back there?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I would like for Mr. Norman to come to this thing for something he need to, I would like for him to reconsider.
Can, can we do that under other business?
We do it in other, okay, that'd be great, that's it.
Items for future agenda, Mayor Protem?
Nothing at this time.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Nothing.
Commissioner Warbinton?
Uh, nothing.
Commissioner Young?
Nothing.
Okay, now other business, Commissioner Howard?
Mr. Mayor, and since Mr. Norman, once again, congratulation. Mr. Mayor, I'm having a problem, and I think it's taking place throughout the city. On weekend, what I'm seeing in East Albany and a lot of these shopping centers that are closed, like Winn-Dixie in East Albany and the Harbors, and what it is you're having, Mr. Norman, is that individuals know that code enforcement does not work on Saturday and Sunday, and they are bringing these car trailers into the community and parking back on a Friday, and they're leaving out on a Saturday, I mean, on a, on a Monday morning early, and the Winn-Dixie in East Albany on Sylvester Road, on any given weekend, there are six or seven Sunday trailers that have been docked there, and the residential streets are not made for those big wheelers, 18-wheelers come on into neighborhoods, so I was wondering that, since you just taken over, can you get Mr. Carter sometime on, one time out the month, just work a half a day on that Saturday, and just cite some of these individual, bring these big trailers and things coming into the, in the residential area? I can tell you 10 places this weekend, I know they'll be there.
Yes, sir, we do have weekends work coming up in the near future here real soon. But I will, I will take a look at-
I certainly appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Mayor Protem, other business?
No other business at this time.
Commissioner Fletcher?
Mr. Norman, while y'all are out, would you send them to the church on Stewart? I'm getting, I'm having to say, they're all parking on Stewart, and they know they get there after 5 o'clock on Friday, and they leave Sunday night. Thank you.
Commissioner Warbinton?
Yeah, just, in, in general, and the, the chief personally can correct me if I'm wrong, but it, it seems like the crimes for recycled material is on the rise, and especially when I'm talking about is catalytic converters. I've gotten numerous phone calls in the last week or two from individuals, I mean, in broad daylight, out in prominent places, they come in and the catalytic converters are, are cut off of their cars. So as citizens, obviously, you know, we, we own, locking our cars at night, not keeping the, you know, but when your car is just simply parked, and I, I don't know, and Mr. Davis, I guess this was kind of a question of you, I know locally, are there some ordinances at these recycle yards that could target certain recycling, because isn't there some ordinances for, like, if, if somebody brings an air conditioner, they have to identify who they are, or is that a local ordinance for, like, the air conditioner? I know we went through-
I'll check, I, I personally use one of the recycling places, they have a camera system, the one on Old Leesburg Road, I think is what it's called, out by where railroad tracks and Oxford lamps, but they actually take pictures of people when they bring in material. And I'll check and see if that's a state law or a local ordinance, yes.
Okay, it just seems to be a, an increase in, in that type of crime, but obviously, they're getting them because they can go, go take them somewhere and convert them into cash, so whether that's a recycling yard or, or somewhere else, if, if we can cut off the easiness of, of getting payment, that might cut down on that, that one aspect that seems to be happening a lot. Yeah, that, that's it, Mayor, thanks.
Commissioner Young?
Nothing further.
Um, I, I just have an issue, I guess Mr. Forgive, Mr. Norman can, can help me. A friend of mine lives very close to a restaurant on, on Slappy, it stays open to 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, people come by, playing loud music, people get out and talk, I just, I don't know what, if anything, we, we can do, but of course, when the restaurant's open that late at night, you got the, all, all the lights are on, it's really impacting individuals' enjoyment of his, his, his property, and I, I'll get you something about that, Marshall Norman and Mr. Forgive, I don't know if we can do anything, but it is a, a very real problem for this constituent, I'll, I'll get you the details on that. Next, city manager's update?
Yes, sir, thank you again for your support and the work that you did the past week, helping us get through that budget adjustment. But for the city manager's update, I am in Washington DC this morning, I'm joining you from my hotel room, have the opportunity to meet with our local delegate for some of those issues that we think are important nationally, advocating for the PSO project and COVID healthcare, anything else that you guys think, oh, now broadband is that, also on that list, but anything else that you guys want me to bring up, as I have the opportunity to engage with legislators, please give me a text or shoot me an email or something, just to check my memory, make sure that I am covering those things, that I'm representing what you want to be represented. Our city manager's update is published each week, so I ask that you look at that for the particular numbers on, and updates on projects, but that's all I have for this time, Mayor, thank you.
It, um, do we have an executive session?
It's potential litigation, it can wait till next month.
Okay, all right. With that, Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.